I'd like to call this meeting of School District 116 to order. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to ask anybody who's participating in the meeting to please get the microphones close to your mouth. I've gotten reports from several constituents attempting to watch our meetings on video that they are unable to hear us. So please get really close to the mic and speak clearly and plainly. Roll call, please.
Member Baxley?
Here.
Member Hassanaka? Member Jones? Member Staton?
Yes.
Member Langendorf? Here. Vice President Exum?
Here.
President Polowski?
Here. We have quorum. There is one requested modification to tonight's agenda, and that was we'll be swapping administrative reports 10 dot 3 and 10 dot 4 so that we can kind of keep the dual education discussion in one cohesive flow. It's time for citizen statements. If you'd like to make a statement before the board, there are Golden Rush Sheets in the back of the room. Please fill it out and hand it to our recording secretary, Lori Johnson. First up tonight is Kate McLean.
I'm extremely nervous, so bear with me for a little bit. My name's Kate McLean. I used to work at Wiley. I now work at LEO, and I love it. It's been really good. But over the past couple of meetings, I've been disturbed by -- disturbed is not the right word -- concerned by people not speaking to a couple of things that I wanted to say. And I'm -- I think some of you will be surprised by what I want to say, but I'm really nervous. So let me go back to notes. I told you about how I work for the district. I'm also a parent. I've had two children go through the middle school. One is in the high school now, one has gone on to college. I live in the area, and I'm a really big fan of Urbana. I didn't go to school here myself, but I'm a big fan, and I really enjoy it here. I have a bunch of points, and they're going to feel unrelated. So one of them is that parents really like neighborhood schools. When we moved here nine years ago, they're our districts we didn't move to because we liked the way that Urbana had it set up. And I think a lot of people like that. We do have a lot of neighborhood schools, so hold on to that thought. We chose Urbana for that. We also chose for small schools. And some of our schools are getting larger and larger. Second point. The middle school is, you know, always a topic of discussion, and I have had two kids go through it. One thing that I need to make sure that people hear is that our middle school teachers are probably the most vulnerable. We cannot lose any of them, especially not the veteran teachers. And I would really like that to be considered, that their opinions and their needs come very high at the top of the list. We can't lose any of them. We have fantastic middle school teachers. I know that there are developmental and logistical issues with having the middle school at a different building. Kids who are accelerated, different programs, whether they're going to be able to have HOMAC-type classes, which my child is really enjoying right now, so that was something that she suggested I mention. And then the developmental part is that our sixth-grade students are going from fifth grade, where they've been for a few years, and then to sixth grade, and then on to a different school. And I'm concerned about the continuity there because I think sixth-grade adolescent students are going through a lot. I want to make sure that there is continuity through there so that they have people that they trust as they go from one building to another building and then to another building. So and then two years later to another. So that's a concern. I'm really optimistic for Urbana, and that's part of why I'm here. I told you I'm a fan, right? I think we have a really good chance to grow. And some of you maybe went to the football game last week, right? We're having a rough start, but we didn't have a team a couple of years ago. But now we do, and I think we're really growing, and maybe the district's growing too. Which kind of brings me to my main point. I think we're trying to solve too many issues with one building. And I know money is, of course, always an issue. But I think when we get down to it, we're trying to slice up a pie that needs to be We need two buildings. We need another elementary school to spread out all the kids. We need another middle school. We might even need a DL school. We need more buildings. And it's not something that can be decided at this meeting, but I want us to think big. And there's a big sign over there that nobody at home can see about changing your mindset and about growth mindset. And we talk about this at school. We're growing. We're gonna be growing. Believe me, we are. And we really need to be thinking of the future and having more, bigger Urbana. So let's think and plan for a bigger, better Urbana and Urbana School District in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lauren Carpos.
Okay. Hi, I'm the parent of a kindergartner, but I live in the Wiley Zone. For the newer board members, I recommend that you watch the early meetings from this year's board if you have not already to see the massive, absolutely massive outpouring of community support that you saw from the Wiley community. And you saw an entirely unanimous voice from the Wiley community. Parents were told repeatedly by board and administrators, "This is just about the abatement." I could quote many of you saying, "This is just about the abatement," when you voted. Every question and potentially viable alternative proposal put forth by the community went unanswered, and they were told, "This is just about the abatement." But the parents knew that by intentionally scattering their children to three other schools without attempting to keep them together, which might have been possible if some of the questions that were raised had been addressed or even seriously answered based on the empty classroom space in the district at that time. Parents knew that the intention was to close their school permanently. So after just one meeting for parents during which no time was left at the end for questions, no -- virtually no visits from current board members, as far as I'm aware, no special meetings with parents about any sped transition planning, no meetings with the district's DEI administrator at Wiley, the school was closed in two weeks, and students were scattered to the wind. So I think it's important to note that this all contrasts pretty starkly with the amount of public meetings and the time that was given to the Committee on Dual Language last year. So I find myself, and I know other Wiley parents do as well, who I'm in regular communication with, I find myself repeatedly asking why there was so much time for community concerns and voices and so much debate among board members about the dual-language decision, but really almost silence about the Wiley decision. It was like there was no discourse or vigorous debate or opinions about the decision. It was just the vote, really. So when the committee composition was announced, it initially just had two Wiley parents and six middle school teachers on it. Any reasonable committee would have had equal representation from various interests, with some deference given to the affected community, which eventually happened after a lot of community spoke out against it. The composition of this committee absolutely predetermined their conclusions. It is important to note that both co-chairs of the committee voted against the middle school decision. After many months of research and service, and I know that one of them was initially leaning in the other direction, and it was after this research that both co-chairs made the decision that to vote no for the middle school. So I guess my question is, why didn't the administration from the get-go say, "We want a sixth-grade center. Here's why. Here's our budget proposal. Here's why." I feel like this would have saved parents many worried nights wondering what the end goal was here. Some questions I have that I really hope you guys debate vigorously tonight, and I'm willing to be convinced, you know, the sixth-grade center presentation was pretty convincing. Personally, I'm all for a tax referendum. We'll pay more taxes. We're Urbana. Who cares? So think about all solutions on the table, guys. Come on. How does overcrowding our elementary school classrooms help our ability to recruit teachers? My understanding is that a long-term sub is teaching an elementary-level class in my child's building right now. I'm just, you know, concerned about the ability to recruit elementary school teachers. I didn't know it was an issue at the middle school. Maybe someone can explain a little bit more about that to me as well. How do larger elementary school classrooms and more transitions improve student learning? My understanding, I'm not an educational expert, but my understanding is that fewer transitions are better from what I've heard from other people. Because I'm concerned that the lowering our elementary school levels will trickle up to the middle school eventually in terms of outcomes. If the financial argument is the stronger argument, and there are major concerns about paying staff, then I think we should seriously look at having the board scale back budgets where possible, but also ask taxpayers for a referendum, you know? Because we can't be in a position to be sacrificing fundamental student learning outcomes in the name of a budget. That's not what education should be about in this country. We're clearly already at crisis point, so I hope that you have a really vigorous debate and think about how does the Wiley decision need to happen first, or can it not be wrapped up with redistricting? Because that's my question.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Janzen.
This fall, you all are expected to make two huge, huge decisions. What to do with Wiley School and also whether the district will convert a neighborhood elementary school into a Spanish dual-language school. Both of these decisions will feed into a proposed redistricting to be completed later this academic year. Now, at the end of last week's meeting, I noticed that one of our newest board members asked a question about the proposed order in which these decisions are being made. This was an excellent question and one that I'd wish to revisit right now. Last spring, I, along with many others, encouraged this board to create a strategic plan. A strategic plan is used to prioritize efforts, effectively allocate resources, ensure that stakeholders and organizational leaders are working towards shared goals, and ensure that those goals are backed by data and sound reasoning. Given the purposes of a strategic plan, I would argue that Sitlali's question is one that should not be ignored. I encourage you therefore to vote no, not now, on the Wiley proposal and to delay a decision on the dual-language school. I'd also encourage you to delay redistricting, which has to happen after those decisions are made. But in my opinion, the district needs the strategic planning process first. The strategic planning process can conceivably start immediately, and it should be used to determine what the district's most critical needs are. That answer should be driven by data, by input from all stakeholders, and sound reasoning. As a board, I hope you will carefully consider the process that will be used for sharing information and importantly for soliciting feedback from diverse stakeholders. We must all be open to differing opinions and views. The process itself is designed to help you as board members to allocate resources more effectively and make informed decisions that will shape the outcomes for Urbana students for the next decade. The current approach, however, asks you to make these important decisions without thinking about trade-offs. It forces you to allocate resources without a comprehensive view of stakeholders' priorities. I don't think this is fair to you as board members, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the community. One example of this is the concept of neighborhood schools that someone raised earlier. Paul, you campaigned on a platform of protecting neighborhood schools. A booklet on the district website highlights some of the benefits of neighborhood schools, including, from the booklet, "Building Community Relationships, Higher Family Engagement, Diversity and Cultural Engagement, and Increased Safety." These are all good things, potentially worth prioritizing. Within the next few months, you will be making two decisions that have major implications for those neighborhood schools. Shouldn't we first ask ourselves whether we still value neighborhood schools? I'm extra worried about this because the district's website, which used to tout neighborhood schools as a strength, has suddenly been stripped of any mention of the word neighborhood at all. We need transparency, and we need an open dialogue. That's why I'm asking for community input regarding community values and priorities before making any major decisions. For example, the Wiley recommendation has been made without soliciting input from the community. You need that input to make an informed decision reflecting the priorities of the families that you represent. The decisions you're being asked to make involve trade-offs. They do. And I really hope we can talk openly about those trade-offs. The impacts of these decisions will affect our children, our community as a whole, for at least a decade. Let's not rush. Let's start with the strategic plan. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next up is Paul Hickson. I'm sorry, sir. Could you just a little closer to the mic? Yeah, thank you.
Like this?
Yeah, we want to make sure that people at home can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Good evening. We, the public, are starting to see a pattern here. Time after time, the administration brings an emergency situation before the board and asks for your rapid endorsement of their response to the emergency de jour. It began with the dual-language program that could only be solved by making LEO a dual-language-only building. Never mind that the parents of the monolingual students had been excluded from all the discussions leading up to that point, and even that many of the dual-language parents expressed a need for more information. No. You were told there was an emergency, and you had to act. And you had to act even though there was reason to believe that a number of best practices in how to successfully operate a dual-language program in a two-strand school were not being followed. Fortunately, that issue has been put on pause for now. So while many are glad that it wasn't endorsed by the board, that possibility still exists. Next up was closing Wiley because of pressing asbestos problems, a problem that had actually been known for several years. And the asbestos was safely contained, awaiting abatement at the proper time. But no, there was an emergency. You had to close the building. And it was only after the building was closed that the idea was trotted out to repurpose it to be a sixth-grade attendance center. And again, it's been submitted to you, the board, that this is a sky-is-falling emergency that calls for your rapid endorsement. Last meeting, we heard the superintendent say that we've been kicking the redistricting can down the road for six years, and she needs you to act quickly to approve this sixth-grade center and then quickly approve the dual-language program so we can quickly get on with redistricting. All that so that when this is done, we can then begin strategic planning. As was just said by the previous speaker, that's totally backwards to common sense and establish strategic planning processes. The craziness of this thinking could best be summed up when I restate it this way. Think how crazy this sounds. We need to rush big decisions so we don't delay the process by which we can make big decisions. That's just nuts, folks. And it leads us to this question. Is this fuzzy thinking? That would be bad. But many are asking, "What's the real agenda here? Are there hidden agendas?" Many residents increasingly think there are. Urbana 116 is in danger of losing public trust. And you, the elected board members, have a critical role here. You need, through your questions, deliberations, and decisions, to begin the long, and I'm sorry to say, slow, process of re-establishing that essential trust. And it must be there so that public support for Urbana schools is going to be there moving forward. The ball's in your court. We are pulling for you. The community is pulling for you, and this is terribly important. Finally, I want to conclude, as I do each time I speak to the board, by reminding you that there are many in this community who want to help Urbana schools be successful. It's in everybody's best interest. But we strongly believe the only way to do that is to adhere to those four principles we keep talking about. Approach new issues as problem-solving exercises in which you really don't know where the best answer is going to come from or the best tweak. Be fully transparent in all your actions. Always make sure that all decisions are held up against the end goal of academic improvement for all students. And be attentive to research in these areas and guided by it. Please hear my comments as being supportive of you. It's a tough job. I appreciate what you're doing. I wish you really all the success in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickson. Next up is Jennifer Hickson. If anybody else wishes to make a statement before the board at this time, there's Golden Rush Sheets in the back of the room. Please fill it out and hand it to our -- no, it's you. Go ahead. To our recording secretary, Lori Johnson. Later on in our meeting, there will be an additional opportunity to address the board on Wiley School.
Sorry. Sometimes my hearing aids are --
Oh, it's okay. Just, yeah. Yeah, please get the mic close to your mouth, though. Thank you.
I have some comments and questions about the sixth-grade center report. My focus is solely, solely on academic achievement and that part of the report that I kind of know something about. We need to improve academic achievement levels in Urbana. So number one. Will having fewer elementary schools increase class size? Your answer is, "There are only four elementary classrooms needing a class-size adjustment TA." This doesn't answer the question. Let the board see and compare this year's and last year's class-size numbers. Teachers often prefer having one more student and needing a class-size adjustment aid rather than having fewer. One fewer. Just one more student, but at least you got some help. The number of class-sized adjustment aids is not an indication of overall class size or teacher-student stress because of class size. According to the report at the previous board meeting, DPW now has 495 students. This is almost 50 above the self-imposed limit that the district had placed on students there. We were told last year that having more than 450 students there was untenable, bad for teachers and students, and that we had to figure out a way to deal with these overflow students that is fair to DPW families. DPW's academic achievement is the lowest of all the elementary buildings. So is this fair to the DPW families? If those students must be placed in other buildings, how will that affect class size in those buildings? Based on the teacher shortage, would we have enough teachers to reopen Wiley as an elementary school? Smaller class sizes require more teachers. But there is some research that supports the theory that smaller class size is a stronger predictor of increased academic achievement than the strength of the teacher in the room. Could we team an experienced certified teacher with a new, uncertified teacher to help us get through this crisis? Would that have some chance of increasing academic achievement? Our teacher vacancy rate, when looked at on a per-pupil basis, is larger than champagne. Why is that? What is the best use of the staff that we have? According to the data on the school report card, we have more administrators per pupil than the state average. Do we have staff members who are doing mentoring or administrative work that would be better used in the classroom during this shortfall emergency? Are we using their talents as well and efficiently as we can to improve academic achievement? Dual-language and multilingual services, these will be more difficult to schedule and manage. Teachers will need to travel between schools. When I had a teacher travel between King and UHS, we lost important, significant instructional time for students because the teacher was driving. We paid extra for mileage for that time, and she wasn't teaching or planning instruction or collaborating with colleagues, all of which are activities that could help improve academic achievement. Higher-level courses. Our highest attrition rate for students is at the middle school level. I know families who took kids out of Urbana during the middle school years and then returned for high school, and some who, once they were out, stayed out. There is research that shows that academic achievement goes up for sixth graders in a K-6 school and down for sixth graders in a middle school. But that can be offset for some families if their kids can participate in the higher-level classes. Part of what keeps families in the district is that ability. All scheduling, don't kid yourself, all scheduling, sixth through eighth, will have to consider time for students to travel. Students and teachers who travel back and forth lose significant instructional time. This is a drag on academic achievement, and I predict fewer options. I would feel better about all of this if I felt that the district had had a process that looked at many options, all with a focus on increasing academic achievement. I'm going to throw one out of left field. All K through eight buildings, we should have all K through eight buildings with K through eight dual-language program in our middle school building and use redistricting to make the numbers work. The benefits? Some research shows better academic achievement for middle schoolers in a K-8 building than in a middle school. Almost all research indicates better school climate. Students report not being as scared. This solution finds a great home for the DL program. Families are loyal to their elementary buildings. We might not have the attrition we have now, and we would have a better shot at raising academic achievement levels for all students.
Thank you, Ms. Hickson. Last up is Efrem Cutwiler.
Do I hit the button for the --
Just make sure the mic is close. Yeah. If it's green, then you're good to go. Just make sure the mic's close to your mouth, please.
All right, cool. Okay, there we go. My name is Efrem. I'm a parent at Thomas Paine. What I would like to urge you guys as the board is just for more transparency. I, as a parent, we started the new school year here, and there are still some gaps. I think what we need is more transparency so that we retain more teachers. The original idea was that we were going to fill the holes, you know, because we had a shortage. Well, right now, we still have shortages, like Mr. Gutsmer, I saw you crossing guard on Philo Road. We're still missing a crossing guard on Philo Road. There've been other things that are going on that I was promised to us when we switched over and we were going to take our kids from Wiley to Thomas Paine. That's a big gap. That's a, you know, I've seen the principal out there, but there's other things that we had that, you know, should have been there. And I know that there are other, like, if we had better transparency earlier, maybe we would retain more people, and things like this wouldn't be an issue. I'm really -- I'm really concerned with the Wiley decision because there wasn't enough transparency in the first place. We did have a lot of teachers leave. We're still missing teachers. We need more help. And I feel like if you guys are going to take the time and do it, I think that we can have a better, a better way to communicate, not only to us as in the community, whether or not, my total feelings aside, if you guys feel that it should be a sixth-grade center, we need more research to tell us that this is going to be okay because I, we hadn't seen enough. And on the board side, I know that there were, I don't agree with the makeup of the committee, but at the same time, like, you guys are basically making the decision. You need to show us reasons to have more trust in this whole decision. If it's going to be a sixth-grade center, great. If it's going to be an elementary center, or still an elementary school, as much as I'm on edge because I don't know what to think. You know what I mean? And I'm not the only one here. If I knew more information about what you guys thought here on these decisions, if you took, you guys could have said this six months ago, and now we could have more research now. You guys could tell us why you think that it should be a sixth-grade center. You guys could tell us what you guys are thinking. But at some point, I know you guys are in charge and there's a decision to be made, but at some point, we got to have more transparency so that we can have more trust in you guys in the decisions that are being made for us and for our kids. Because right now, I don't know what to think. And I know that there's a bunch of other teachers and parents and others that feel the same way. And the rushed decision to close Wiley and how everything's going here, like, there was a lot to kind of be desired on the parenting. I'm trying to find the nicest way to put that. It has been a struggle for me, just looking back as a parent here, going through the transitions. I know that we needed more staff in the, in the, in the, in the lines for drop-off over at Thomas Paine. Like, so I can't imagine what some of the other schools are dealing with. Yet, if there was a little bit more, you know, planning that was put, and I'm asking you guys for more planning into whatever you guys are going to do. Because the execution here is definitely going to reflect on you guys. Like, and it's going to help create a better sense of community. Because right now, like, there's a sense of broken community here. On my block, across the street from Wiley, we got three different, we got kids that my kids play with, and they're all going to three different schools. And it's in the district, right? It's crazy. All that we're going to a previous school. And we're all kind of getting different things here. And, I mean, this is the community that we were living in, that we were, that was built. And now it's taken apart, you know? And I'm just asking for more transparency so that I know I will feel more comfort. And when you have more people who have more, more comfort in there, they're going to help build more trust in other people as well. And they're going to help bring more people to the community. But until you get more trust from us, which we, you know, and more of us to believe in you guys, the more you're, the more it's going to be, you're going to get more pushback. The more you're going to get more frustration. And I feel like, I'm sure you guys feel the same way. Frustrated just like me, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutwiler. There will be a public forum later in this meeting for people to come to address the board with regards to Wiley School. There is no call tonight for an executive session after our meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended? Oh, yeah, before we progress out, Ms. Jones is sick and would like to state for the record that Ravi is present, even though he wasn't here during roll call. Okay, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the slight amendment of swapping administrative reports 10.3 and 10.4?
Move for approval with amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. There are no commendations or recognitions tonight. It is now time for our public hearing. So I will open the floor for people to come forward and, you know, give a statement with regards to Wiley School beyond what we had in our public comment section.
All right. I first want to note that I'm still personally undecided on the issue. I'm only here to raise some of the concerns that I have. I specifically want to focus on what happens when you remove 12 classrooms from the elementary school system. That's the number of classrooms at Wiley. There are really three options, right? You either increase class sizes, you repurpose other classrooms, or you assume that the district will shrink. The district's own frequently asked questions document suggests that this district is not shrinking, so we can rule that one out. To see how classrooms have increased, I requested data on class sizes from the district. I appreciate that that data was provided very quickly so that I can answer this question today. Class sizes in the district have historically averaged 20 students. And that's been true for the last five years across schools and across grade levels. This year, monolingual classrooms throughout the district have, on average, 1.4 additional students. So that's a 7% increase relative to last school year, on average. These impacts, though, are concentrated at three schools, Thomas Paine, DPW, and Yankee Ridge. Thomas Paine took 87 Wiley students, but they actually didn't see major impacts on class sizes because they used five of their eight brand-new classrooms to accommodate the influx, which is naturally what should have happened. This allowed them to soak up one Wiley classroom basically at every level. But DPW and Yankee Ridge have, on average, three extra students in every classroom this year relative to last. That's a 15% increase at those schools. This is true for DPW, even though DPW didn't take on very many Wiley students. So why is that? It appears that DPW kept their overflow students because Yankee Ridge didn't have room for them. It sounds like there is a capacity concern that we need to be thinking about. So two schools saw 15% increase in class sizes on average. And let's not forget, evidence suggests class sizes can have significant negative impacts on student achievement. So this worries me. One other way to keep class size impacts low is to repurpose classrooms, right? That was the third option that I gave. Non-instructural classrooms are used for important functions like literacy intervention, special education, ESL instruction, and probably a lot of things that I don't even know about. The impact on those students, though, should be fully assessed before approving Wiley as something other than an elementary school. What worries me most is that the, the information that's being provided isn't acknowledging any of these trade-offs. So, for example, the frequently asked questions doesn't actually answer the question about class sizes, as someone already pointed out. It just says class sizes don't exceed the contractual max more than usual. In my opinion, being at the contractual max is a worst-case scenario. For example, this year, my third grader is in a classroom with 28 students. That's eight students more than the average class size in the district last year. But it still doesn't require an aid. It's not over the contractual max. In other words, the frequently asked question answer simply says we mostly avoided a worst-case scenario. I hope this school board will seriously discuss and consider any potential negative impacts, including to the Wiley community for special ed and other special programs, thinking about all of these children, all of these children in our district who will be going through multiple transitions, and the impacts on middle-school programming. There will be negative impacts. I cannot say if the negative impacts will exceed the positive impacts. I can't. But ignoring them is foolish. We need to anticipate them. We need to plan for them before moving forward with a recommendation. To close, I'd like to propose a radical alternative. Jennifer proposed a radical alternative. Instead of a sixth-grade center, maybe we should consider a second middle school. Maybe at Wiley, maybe somewhere else, someone else suggested somewhere else. Let's say it's at Wiley. With 900 students, UMS is one of the biggest schools in the state. Another radical idea is that those empty classrooms could potentially be used for a DL school. I have no idea if it will work, folks. But what I'm asking you to think about is all of our options. This decision is going to affect our children. It's going to affect our community for a decade. Let's not rush the decision. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator. Would anybody else like to address the board in our public forum? Calling once. Calling twice. All right. Closing the public forum, we will have another public forum in two weeks. Thank you. Student Ambassador Report, sorry. Paulina.
Yeah, it's tricky.
This is the Student Ambassador Report from me and Dominica for September 19th. The focal points are maintenance within the high school, and then some students had a lot of opinions about the new food service, Quest, for lunch, and some of the accomplishments of the Urbana Tigers. For Quest's food management services, specifically for lunch, some common perspectives are loads of students want juice back in the cafeteria, and some students desire more food options for lunch. And some days, students are only offered white milk, and students don't take anything to drink for lunch because of this. But the fruit has been a big hit, and students love the fruit, and they're always gone really fast. And they really like the sandwiches and the pizza, and there are really long lines for that. There's been some problems with inclusivity for lunch. There's been some instances where Quest doesn't have non-pig options. Therefore, students who are Muslim may not have the option for protein for lunch. I've seen this, and they've had to, like, have just, like, vegetables and bread. And there are hardly any non-meat options, which could impact vegetarians, Hindus, vegans, and Buddhists. And many students have to bring home food, have to bring food from home, and then use classroom microwaves to heat up their food because there's no gluten-free options. And so they were trying to find a way to put a microwave in the cafeteria because they don't have enough options at lunch. Does any, does anyone have any idea what is on the bottom of this fruit? Does anyone have any idea? Okay. So a student showed me this picture, and we were wondering, like, is this food still good to eat, and what's on the bottom of it? And they were, like, very concerned about it, and this is from Quest, so. Utility and maintenance of the Urbana High School. I put out a question, asking students what they wished for, and almost every single student talked about the bathrooms and the temperature in classes. Students have been asking for sinks that work. Normally, they work for, like, maybe two seconds, and then they just stop working and water stops flowing. And the toilets don't always flush, and they overflow a lot. And the doors are not big enough, so when students go to the bathroom, sometimes you can see students using the bathroom. The temperature, the air conditioning and the heating are not well. Students have been complaining about how they're freezing in one class, but they're really hot in another. So, like, I've seen students fanning themselves. One time, we had to go in the theater because it was too hot in our classroom. And then lots of people are wearing jackets in class, and one time, people were sitting on the floor in front of the heater instead of at their desks, just so they could get warm. On a brighter note, congratulations to the Urbana Tigers. Their Urbana High School marching band attended a competition last weekend and performed very well. The Urbana High School football team played their first home game and scored two touchdowns, although they ultimately lost. Urbana High School swim team and dive, dive and swim team placed 11th at their last competition, and Urbana High School's marching band performed at a football game for the first time this year at the home game. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
We will share your notes, Quest, with the question.
They're actually coming, I think, on October 3rd to give a presentation about vegan and vegetarian options and an update on food service and how it's gone for the first couple of months. So that'll be really good lead-in.
That's timely. So it's now time for administrative reports. First up is our USD 116 budget discussion from Katie.
All right. Yes? Oh, okay, thanks. All right. So I was able to get the budget sent out a day early on Thursday to everybody. Hopefully, you had a chance to look it over. I'm going to go through this presentation to just highlight the most major changes year over year, the big, the largest budget items. So if you have specific questions, I'll try to answer them tonight. Otherwise, I'll certainly be able to respond and answer in the next day or two. Okay, is this working? Okay. All right, so I'm going to walk through, first of all, just before I get into the budget, I was just going to briefly review the performance of the Education Fund, which is our largest fund for the current fiscal year that just ended. You'll be receiving the audited financial statements for last fiscal year at the October board meeting. So this is kind of a preliminary review of the ed fund performance. Then we'll go through the budget assumptions document and highlight some budget changes year over year. And then finally, I'll go over the fund balances of our major funds. So for the Education Fund, we performed fairly well. We had budgeted $53 million in revenues, and we fell short of that by about $2 million. We brought in $51 million in revenue. The primary reason for that is because the June property tax payments were held back by the county treasurer, and we didn't receive them until July, actually, until August. So there was a big chunk that we normally would have received in June that didn't come. And about two, over $2 million of that was supposed to come to the ed fund. For expenditures, we also performed well. We had budgeted expenditures of $53 million, and our actual expenditures were around $49 million. And there was a, last year, the main reason for our performance for expenditures was due to unfilled vacancies, and that was still a major factor, but there were several other smaller factors as well. But I was just highlighting the most major factor. At least half of this number was due to unfilled vacancies that we had budgeted that were never filled for the year. And so in the end, although we had budgeted a surplus for the ed fund of $200,000, we wound up with a surplus of $1.9 million, which will be good going into the next couple of years where we have more uncertainty. So first, I'd like to talk about the revenue assumptions that are on, in the FY '24 budget. So the document that I'll be talking about is the one that says budget assumptions at the top. And on page one, bullet point number one, property tax revenues are our largest source of revenue for the district. They make up about 70% of our revenues. And our property tax revenues are expected to increase year over year from last year about 9.9%. And so some of that is actual known revenue amounts because the levy is split in half between two years. We receive half of the levy from the '22 levy, and then we receive the other half from the '23 levy based on the fiscal year ending in June. Property tax, or property owners make tax payments in June and September. And so all the payments that are made in June, we receive in the prior fiscal year. And then the payments that are made in June, we receive in the prior fiscal year. And then the payments that we receive in September are in the next fiscal year. So they're always split in half based on that levies cycle. So we know how much we're planning on getting for the current levy that we're in right now for the payments that are being made in September. And then we estimate how much we believe we will receive in June of next year, which is still FY '24. And so with those changes, we know that for the current year, we had a lot of new property come on to the board, to the roles in the equalize assessed values because of the new apartment complex that was built along University and Lincoln. And then also because TIF II expired and that brought another 20 million into EAV as well. And new property for the property tax levy is a one-time bump to our levy that we can accept in the year that it's added. But then going forward, because we're under tax caps, the only other new revenue we receive from property taxes is the change in the Consumer Price Index, which is given to us every January. And so we know we had a 5% change in Consumer Price Index in the current year and we've already, it's been released that it'll be 5% again next year. So we do have some way to estimate what next year's levy will be. And so in total, we're estimating property tax revenue growth of 9.9%. Bottom of page one also discusses evidence-based funding. Actually Lori, would you mind helping distribute that? And we, Jennifer found this lovely one-pager about evidence-based funding that's very colorful that ISB put out and I just thought we'd hand that out as another visual. But we were really fortunate to find out in late August that we were, we received tier-one funding for evidence-based funding. So rather than, ever since evidence-based funding began in 2018, or I think it was 2018, we've always been in tier-two and we've received between 300 and 350,000 in new revenues each year. And then the following year, that 300,000 becomes part of the base and then you get another new tier allocation each year. And so the goal would be that state funding helps offset and equalize the differences in property tax funding amongst the districts throughout the entire state. So this is all done through what's called an adequacy target calculation. And we consistently, for every year of evidence-based funding, had an adequacy target of 73% and that did not change this year. But the factors, the tier levels of how they're setting, who fell into tier-one and who fell into tier-two, as the districts have gotten better funded, they're raising that target. So last year, the target was anybody under 70%. Well, this year, it's anybody under 77. So we are 73, so we wound up in tier-one because they keep raising that target to help bring the districts that are lower adequacy target funded up. So we were really lucky because instead of 300,000, we got 1.2, 1.3 million in new tier funding this year. And now going forward, that'll be part of our base funding for next year, even if our tier funding goes back to tier-two. So some of that has to do with how much money is available in the state for tier funding each year as well. So there's a lot of factors, it's a very complex system for evidence-based funding, but I feel really fortunate that we were able to qualify for tier-one this year. Okay, so next I'm going to talk at the top of page two. Another large revenue source for the district is corporate personal property replacement tax. And in the last couple of years, this revenue source has been very unpredictable. And it seems to have leveled out now post-COVID and we received an announcement that they were actually going to be reducing allocations for corporate personal property replacement tax due to reconciliation of estimated tax payments to what they actually received. And then we received an estimate, an estimate from the state that that amount of reduction was going to be around $800,000 for this year. So even though we got new EBF funding, we got less CPPRT. But ultimately, the EBF stays consistent and will add to our base and that's really fortunate and the CPPRT may ebb and flow, so. And who knows, because they've put these estimates out for CPPRT and then they're just not right and we wind up with more anyway. So I went ahead and budgeted what they estimated, but in the end, we'll just kind of see what winds up happening. Yeah, please.
Do you mind explaining what is CPPRT?
Yes, it's a tax revenue that's received by the state from corporations. It's, it's part of the corporate filing of their taxes that they, a portion of that comes back to local governments. Thank you.
Would the dark closure potentially affect that?
Well, it's, I don't know that it's actually locally based, I think it's like statewide and then they allocate it out. And I'm not totally sure exactly how they do that, so, but I could research that a little bit more. And we'll get back to you. Okay. Moving on to some expenditure assumptions on the next pa, oh, next slide, sorry. Right. So when we take a look at all salary increases in the district year over year, we're looking at about $8.3 million in total costs for salary increases, a total of 3.2 million in the Ed Fund for next year. And the breakdown of those percentages increases to different classes of employees and types of employees is provided at the bottom of page two of the Budget Assumptions Document. So some of those were part of the negotiations for the contract for certified and support staff and some of that was part of the decisions that the Board made in May regarding non-union support staff and administrator raises. In addition, district contributions to health insurance premiums increased by 14% or $660,000, which also included some additional contributions towards family insurance premiums and employer HSA contributions. I mentioned in the tentative budget that we are expecting a decrease in our energy budgets. We found out in April and May that the capacity charges had been very high last year and caused a huge increase in unpredictability in our energy budgets. And in fact, when I was working on the budget last year, they told me to budget a 200% increase, like budget double, and I wound up budgeting 150%. And we wound up coming in right about where I budgeted, which was good. But now this year, the estimates are that we can decrease that now going back down to still higher than historical levels, but a lot less than last year, so that we're looking at a reduction in total energy budgets of around $240,000. And that's in bullet point 11 of the Assumptions Document, talks a little bit more about that. And lastly, there was quite a few changes in budgets for food service on the revenue side and the expenditure side. A lot of those are based on meal participation rates that are being estimated by what our contractor thinks that they'll be able to increase our program by. And so we've budgeted based on those estimates. Those were provided as part of that contract approval that we did last April. Was it in April? And so we're looking at increase in contractual food service costs of around $750,000. And we also budgeted for some increase in food service equipment due to the demands of trying to get all of our equipment up to speed and up to par with what our contractor expects. But also 45,000 of that was a food service equipment grant that we received from the state. So that's included in expenditures and also in revenues. On bullet point 20, I discussed that the Indoor Aquatic Center loss contribution for this coming fiscal year is $266,000. So we have a new agreement with the Indoor Aquatic Center for 2023 to 2027. And the first year of that agreement is very similar to previous agreements where at the end of the year, we look at all the revenues that the facility brought in from memberships and we look at all, or you know, daily admissions to the pool or parties or whatever revenue sources the pool brings in. And then we look at all the costs of staffing the facility and keeping the lights on and the pumps running. And anything that isn't covered by those revenues, the two districts split 50/50, the Park District and the School District. So this year will be much the same, we'll split any loss that's, it always has a loss, by the way, always. It does not make money at all, it never has. And that loss has continued to grow over the years. But we will split that loss 50/50 this coming year. And then for the remaining years of the agreement, in order to help the Park District with some of their needs and to keep this partnership, we decided to tier that split more towards the School District. So the following year, it'll be, instead of 50/50, it'll be 45/55 and then it winds up being 60/40 for the remaining two years of the agreement. And then similarly, we also will be splitting the contribution towards any capital improvements, we'll start to tier more towards the School District. We do own that facility and the Park District is our operating partner. And so for capital improvements, there's a list of items in the new agreement that we were trying to get done more sooner than later, it was things that we already knew were outstanding items. And so that list of items, we committed to splitting 50/50. And then any items that happen after that will be tiered similarly to the split in the following years. And so I budgeted an amount for some capital improvements that are planned that we have been discussing doing in the next year or so, in the current budget as well. Is it time to move on? No, I'm not. Thanks, John. This is the one I was talking about, sorry. Okay, and now the following, the last three bullet points on this slide are all part of bullet point number four, 24 of the Budget Assumptions Document and they talk about capital projects. So currently in the budget, I have $4 million budgeted for the completion of the Thomas Paine Project and most of that occurred in August, there's a few punch list items, well, July and August. A few punch list items, I'm sure that Randy's still working through to close out that contract and then at that point, we'll pay out the remaining retainage on the project and it'll be done. And then I do have two large placeholders for bond proceeds. I've been discussing with Stiefel and they'll actually be here on October 3rd as well to lead a discussion with the Board about issuing bonds. So for now, in the FY '24 budget, I have a placeholder for 20 million in bond proceeds to be issued in the spring. And then I also have our usual three-year rolling bond issue, the 3 million that we issue every three years for summer working, working, working cash bond projects that Randy uses and technology funds for instructional technology that John uses. So that, those two bond proceed placeholders are in the budget. So that, and I also have about 10 million of the 20 is budgeted right now as an expended, on the expenditure side to be appropriated for spending on projects that we issue the bonds for. Just big placeholders. So, okay, and then this slide is the second to last page of the Budget Assumptions Document. There's a budget summary, sorry. It's like this. And this has all of the district's funds. So a couple highlights I wanted to make on this. And firstly, you can see that the Education Fund has a positive surplus end of year, adding about 220,000 to fund balance. And you can see that in the current year surplus column, the second to the right. And then also, I'm also pleased that I'll be working on, I talked about this briefly, but a couple of our funds have negative fund balance, the Operation and Maintenance Fund and the TORT Fund. And I'm working slowly, you can't really do it overnight because you kind of have to adjust your levy slowly. But I am working on trying to get those a little bit more positive this year. So briefly highlighting the major sources of revenue in the Education Fund. Like I said, 70% of our funds come from local sources, which is primarily property taxes. And then 23% comes from state sources and 7% from federal sources, which are primarily state and federal grants that we receive through ISB. And this is the breakdown of the different categories that we have on the expenditure side. You can see 70% of our expenditures are for salaries, 11% are for employee benefits. So most of our budget is going towards staffing costs. And then small percentages go towards services, supplies, a small amount for capital outlay and then other costs such as the most, the largest portion of it is for tuition for special education. And a quick snippet at those fund balances, this is just a chart depicting those fund balances. And so you can see that Operations and Maintenance and the TORT Fund have small negative fund balances that we're working to increase. And all of the other funds are positive, this is projected ending fund balances at the end of the fiscal year if, you know, the budgeted projections were to end this way. So this is where we will be at the end of this coming fiscal year. And I think that was it. So any other questions that I can answer for you or go back on any slides and review?
Board members, any comments or questions?
I know it's a lot.
Joe is going to help me.
Good.
I don't need this? So, my primera pregunta es acerca del budget. Veo que hay mucha distribución sobre todo en salarios y buildings, pero como va a justificarse el budget para las remodelaciones que estamos, que están planeando para el sixth, al centro de seis años?
So the question is, she notices that the majority of the budget goes to salaries and staffing. How does the district plan to work for the budget regarding the remodeling of like the sixth grade center, Wiley, where does that money come from, how does that fit into the budget?
That's a really good question. So the page, this slide that I was sharing is only the Education Fund. So this fund is where, this is the largest fund that we have in the district. However, the construction projects come from a different fund and that would be on this slide, which is also this page. And if you look at the one that's called Fund Number 60, which is called Construction from Bonds, and also Fund 65, which is Facility Sales Tax Proceeds, those two funds fund our construction projects. So you can see that in the current year for fiscal year '24, we're budgeting for 23 million in new revenues in that Fund 60. And so that would be the 20 million of bond proceeds if we were to do an alternate revenue source bond in the spring. And the 3 million would be the summer working cash projects that Randy uses for projects throughout the district. And then on the expenditure side, we're budgeting to spend 15 million, which I said 10 million of that is just a budget placeholder for whatever projects would offset the 20 million in bond proceeds. And the other five is the remainder of the bonds that we haven't spent yet from the 2021 bond issue and then a portion of the 3 million that we will issue in the spring.
Are the funds constant or do they change? And how do they change?
Yeah, that's a good question too. So the Education Fund is more consistent, that's going to be the same every year. But the construction funds are more like ebbs and flows based on the projects that you plan and the bond issue and says that you can afford to take out. So we can't always afford, so we will use sales tax revenues to make the bond payments for that 20 million bond. And that's probably a bond that will be repaid over 10 to 15 years. So that will be an amount of time that we probably won't be able to afford issuing bonds again in that amount until those bonds are paid off and then we can take more bonds out again to pay over time.
So do we have sufficient money at this time for the remodeling of Wiley? And if we have sufficient or additional fundings, could it be considered to look at building a new building or another building for more?
In case we need it.
Yeah, if we need it.
Right, so the 20 million is about where we can probably, the estimates that we will get from Ann. So we have our bond consultants will be here in two weeks on the 3rd. And they'll talk more about that and those will be good questions for them. But we can issue somewhere between 12 million and 25 million. It's all kind of still up in the air as to how much we need because until we know what the project is going to cost, we won't issue the bonds because we'll issue the amount that we actually need. The estimates that our architects have given us for Wiley have been 20 million or less. And so that would be a reasonable amount that we would need to issue. But if we issue that, then no, we won't have another 20 million to build a new building or to do anything else until we pay those bonds off.
Thank you.
Just clarifying.
It's like a mortgage.
Loans for public entities.
Thank you both.
Thank you, that worked really well. Joe, thank you.
And one way to look at it is we have
And one way to look at it is, we have income we can spend on building projects right now from our 1% sales tax at around four to four and a half million dollars. You know, if we want to spend more than that in one year, we have to borrow from the future. And that means that, you know, we couldn't take on another project for five or six years if it's 20 million dollars, for example.
That was, that was my concern, like in case we decide to go to the sixth grade center, and then in two or three years, four years, we find out that we actually, the capacity of the remained schools is low, then we have to have another building. So how are we gonna play with numbers? Where the money gonna go? Do we have some saving? Or it's going, it's gonna be like up in the air again?
Yeah, if we, we'd have to go to the voters and ask for them to raise their taxes for us to have more income to build, to build more. That's what we'd have to do from.
Paul acknowledged me. I have a question. You talked about the education fund being the same every year. And this must have been brought up before the contract was voted on. But how do you prepare for the increases in salaries, et cetera, for the next couple of years of the contract?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We did some projections, and I mean, one thing is we do know, we knew, had a pretty good idea what our new tax base would be. We knew we were gonna have 5% CPI. And then again, we just found out we're gonna have another 5% CPI. So we had some idea of what those revenue sources that do grow that education funds annually would be. But then from there, you know, we have to make commitments that are agreeable to both sides of the party and then make it work. So I don't know what the future will hold for the remaining two years of the contract, other than my conservative estimates. But I told Dr. Ivory Tatum that as soon as this budget's done, I'm starting to do some real projections of FY '25 to try to get a better idea of what that looks like. So, and so many things are up in the air, too, that are big moves, that make a big difference. But the contract, you know, I do know what estimates the total contract will cost over the three years. And then figuring out what other revenue sources and other costs the district, district may have over those years. It's pretty hard to do multi-year projections in local government. So, you know, we'd kind of do all of our budgeting one year at a time. If you really were to get into a pinch where you had a deficit, you know, you'd probably just move forward with that deficit and use that year to plan how you're gonna not have a deficit the following year. And that's part of the reason we have fund balance, is to be able to withstand one bad year while you're making those changes.
So along those lines, on the Ed Fund surplus for this upcoming year, it's 219,000, right? So the number that I heard bandied about in February was that we would save a million dollars by closing Wiley for this current school year. So then is it safe to say Wiley wasn't closed this year, our Ed Fund would have a deficit of like 780,000?
Yes.
All right, then my next question is, to get the surplus of 219,000, does that include an assumption of the rebates from the solar panel projects that were urgently approved in, say, May?
That is a good question, and no, it doesn't, because I've learned quite a bit about that. So the rebates that we will receive, the project has to be fully completed before we can apply for the rebates. The IRS is releasing guidance on how to apply for the rebates in October. But those solar panels aren't going to be completed. The estimated completion date is something like fall or winter of 2024. So we won't even apply for those rebates until like January 2025. And so that will wind up being in the FY '25 or even '26 budget. So until we have a better idea of those timelines and estimates, that is not in this budget.
Okay. And any other questions, board members, ambassador? All right, all right, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, Katie. Next up is a, for our administrative report, is a discussion on the Urban Adult Education Budget. Shawna Shear.
All right, thank you for having me. So I want to start by doing a quick overview of our programs. Can you hear me okay? It is on. Is that better? Sorry, sorry. I'll speak, be closer. We have a number of programs at Adult Ed. For those of you who don't know a lot about our programming, we have an English language acquisition program for our English language learners. We have a high school diploma program, and as part of that program, we have a WEOWA youth grant, which is a workforce grant, so we help support students finishing out their diploma and then moving on to employment or post-secondary education. We also have the TAOP grant, which funds us as an optional education program and also helps fund the district's Student Engagement Advocates for Truancy. We have our CNA program in partnership with OSF. That's where our students do their clinicals and hopefully become employed. And then that is also partially funded by the United Way. We have a pre-CNA program. We've had it in the past, but in the past couple of years, we haven't been able to run it due to staffing issues. But we are very excited to re-initiate that program this year, and it's scheduled for late October, early November. And that program is, so basically, any student that applies for our CNA program but doesn't yet have the academic skills to be successful in that program, we offer a pre-CNA to help get them ready for our CNA program. Well, you know, our hope is that any student who goes through our CNA program can pass the state licensure exam. So that's why we test students, basically test their reading skills before we admit them to our CNA program. And then we have a citizenship class, which is a very small grant in partnership with the University of Y to help our, you know, community members get their citizenship. So in terms of the budget, what you'll see for this year is that we have had a number of cuts. This is due for my, I'm gonna give you some reasons why that happened for the various grants. So our major funding source is the Illinois Community College Board. And we had a number of cuts for those grants, not because of our performance necessarily, a small portion, maybe 20,000 dollars of that differences because of performance. The rest is just due to how they index our area of need, and they take into account a report that comes out from SIUE every year that says what our unemployment rate is, what our poverty rate is and things like that. And that determines our area of need, and then ICCB distributes those funds accordingly. So Parkland also is in our area and also received a cut. And then AREWEOWA grant, a good portion of that funding is dedicated every year to student employment, and we've had a hard time spending out those funds. And so they cut that about 20% for this year compared to last year. Our TAOP funds, however, went up, and that was very exciting for us and for the district support of the SEA positions. United Way, that original, the 20,250, that was actually the amount we were allocated last year. They came to us after the year started and said, hey, we have this extra money. Do you want it? And I said, sure, of course I do. So that's not actually a cut. It's just back to the original amount. Our citizenship grant is, just supports one teacher. It's a very small program, a very important program, but a small program, and we really didn't need the amount that they gave us last year. We really couldn't even spend that grant out because of what it has to go towards. So it's more accurate this year in terms of what we actually need for that program. And then you can see there that the district TAOP, the funds dedicated to district TAOP. And then also the other revenue source will be the district support that we get every year. We basically have up to that amount, the 75,000, if we need it, which we will for this year, I anticipate, but we haven't needed that whole amount in the last few years. Last year, in fact, we only needed about 3,000 of that amount. But this year I have a feeling unless something changes, given the, the state of things, we will probably need the whole amount. Sorry, Katie. And then we have some amount that, revenue that we get from, for example, we do an advanced ESL class for students who don't qualify. They don't test low enough to qualify for our free classes, but we still want to offer them the service. So we offer a paid class. That basically just covers the teacher's fee and maybe some class materials. We also started a partnership last year with RPC. And for any student, or not students, any adults that they want to enroll in their WEOWA services, they have to take the same test that we give to our students to qualify for our services. And so they come and test in our assessment center, and then we charge them like 20 dollars a student or something, 25 dollars a student. So that's been a nice partnership because it's kind of a win-win for them. We take care of all the management side of things and for a nominal amount for them because they're one of our area partners, but it does help us with a little bit of funding. And then in terms of our expenses, you can see those there. I'll just highlight that, like the district, like every organization, pretty much, the biggest amount goes to salaries and benefits. Purchase services, that's mostly our utilities, copier, you know, anything related to our facility. And then our materials and supplies, a lot of that is the normal materials and supplies, but then we also have a couple of subscriptions to online learning platforms. So you can see there that there is a bit of a deficit as of right now for this year. A couple of things about that. We know that we can't sustain that over time, but there are a couple of, there's actually three grants coming out that I'm pretty excited about. One came to my attention through partners with ICCB, but it actually has to be a municipality that applies for it. So we shared it with Mayor Marlin, who I think, if I'm not mistaken, Jennifer shared it, Dr. Ivory Tatum shared it with Champagne. And they, I think, are going to apply for it and are willing to have us partner with them through that. That's for new immigrants, so hopefully that will happen. And then there's a couple of other grants that ICCB is offering for adult ed programs that one just came out that I plan to apply for, that we've had in the past, and I feel pretty confident, hopefully, that we will get some funding for that. So I expect that that deficit will not be as great as it is when it's all said and done, but we might still have somewhat of a deficit. The other thing is that we do have a pretty healthy, for our size of program, a pretty healthy amount of reserves. Because you can see there are ending fund balance even with the deficit. And so that's why we have those reserves. Those reserves are there exactly for this situation. Again, I'm gonna work real hard to try and not have to dip into those reserves, but worst-case scenario, we dip into it a little bit and then make decisions on how we're gonna get to neck, get through next year and have a balanced budget, which might mean we have to look at where we can make cuts. That'll be a little difficult for us in terms of staffing, because currently we only have, including myself, 13 full-time staff members. So we don't have a lot of cutting that we can do from salaries and benefits. We're operating at one of our lowest levels that we have. But there are creative things, I think, that we can do if we need to in the future to bring that down some. But hopefully it won't be an issue. All right, I'm gonna stop there just to see if there's questions about the budget before I talk about our program.
Board members, any questions?
Yeah. The performance money that you receive, is that for several years back? Not just for the previous year, is that correct? So next year would be?
Right, it goes, it's on like a, my understanding of it is that it's on a three-year sort of cycle so that you don't take a big cut if you have a bad year. It doesn't show up right the next year. So it's on a three-year sort of rolling average.
So it doesn't relate to how many students that you have and how many gains they have?
It is related to how many gains we have and how much, how much enrollment we have.
Right, so if enrollment continues to increase, that means the next few years, hopefully, that.
Yes, my, thank you for mentioning that, because I actually had that in my notes and forgot to say it. We did take a little bit, like I said, a performance hit. Largely due, I mean, we're, you know, we're still dealing with the, the effects of COVID as, as every program is. And so we're hoping that as we get our outcomes, you know, improve, both with our enrollment and our attendance hours and our skill gains, that we will see an increase in those performance dollars.
Can you speak more on the student employment fund cuts? What, what is that and what, why are we losing money there? Or giving money back there?
Yeah, that's a great question. So basically, whatever amount of funding that we get from our WEOWA grant, 20% of that has to be allocated to support student employment. And we have had a really hard time finding students that can work as much as needed in order to spend out those funds and find partnerships with, you know, local organizations that want to employ our students in a supported employment situation, because that comes with, you know, a lot of support. Employers have to give a lot of support. And with everything that has happened with COVID and all of the things, it was hard for us to, to reach all those, to reach the amount we needed to. We do have plans in place, though, to remedy that this year. We have a on-the-job training. We've gotten approval. Finally, that's all gone through. It's completely approved. We've been working on it for a while with OSF. So our CNA students can go right into employment with OSF. And if OSF gives them a full-time job with benefits, then for six months, our funds will cover half of their salary, which is really good for OSF. And good for our students and good for us, because we'll spend out those dollars much more quickly and much more efficiently than trying to place students in shorter-term, fewer-hour employment positions. Does that make sense? Does that help? Okay.
I'm not sure this is a budget question or a program question, but I was wondering if you can tell me approximately, like last year, how many of the students in your high school diploma program were students that were expelled from the district?
That's a great question, and I don't actually have that answer right now. The number expelled, I, in this presentation, there are the number of high school age UHS students. I think we had just a few that were expelled, but I can get those numbers and, and get back to you.
One thing I want to be back off of your question. Typically, how long does it take for a high school diploma student who enrolls to finish and earn the high school diploma? So if an expelled student would come senior year, how long would it take for them to capture credits if they came regularly?
That's a great question, and it, it goes right into my program information. So if, is it fine to move on to that if there are no other budget questions? Okay, great. So we, so it varies based on how many credits our students need. So we look at whatever credits our students have had when they come to us. We evaluate their transcript. And we only have them make up the credits that they're missing. So if a senior comes to us and they only need a handful of credits, they are gonna probably be able to graduate with their class if they do their part. If a senior comes to us and they've only earned three out of the 45 required credits, it's going to take them longer. We in the past have had what I, a model where our high school diploma students enroll, and it's open enrollment. They can enroll throughout the year. And then when they come, we evaluate their transcript. We look at what credits they need. And then they work sort of independently with support from the teacher on whatever credits they need. So each teacher might have in their classroom a number of students working on different subject areas, all at the same time. And we were pretty flexible, especially post-COVID, with when students came, because our students were, you know, managing and balancing a lot of different things. We have changed our structure this year, so we're now doing five-week sessions. Half of, and students are with us for three hours a day, four days a week. And half of that three-hour session is more of a direct instruction class. So if a student needs an English credit, they might be. So if a student needs an English credit, they might be sitting in an English class at the end of that five weeks. If they pass the final exam and they've done the work and met our attendance requirement, they get the credit. And then the other half is kind of the flex model that we've used in the past, where students could be working at their own pace on the credits that they need. Students could complete zero credits during that flex time if they're not really working much on what they need to do. Or they could complete, I just had a student that's already, our session, first five-week session ends actually Thursday. And one student has already completed, par, some of the credits were partially from last year that had rolled over to finish up this year, but he's on his fourth flex credit. So if students work hard and they do a lot of work outside of school, they can move through their credits quickly if they're willing to put in the time. But they have to be willing to work outside of their three hours a day. Does that answer your question? Okay. So going back to the the slides here, the student enrollment, you can look at the historical enrollment. The really good news from this is that our population, our enrollment numbers are starting to come back up. You can see what they were the year that COVID hit in in March, which that was a pretty accurate representation of the, of what we've had in previous years. And then how they dropped and how they're coming back up, especially with our ESL students. We are very excited about those numbers. And also, well, let me go back up for one second. I'm sorry. If you see at the top, it says seven point five attendance hours. Our students have to pass basically four gates in our outcome measures. The first is to hit seven point five hours. That's when they're considered a student to be enrolled. So we have students, a lot more students than the number there, that come but only maybe come to two classes and then leave. So the seven point five means they're actually counted as a student. So you can kind of see the trends there. And then you can see where we're at right now. So what's exciting about this is that our numbers for this year, you can see the difference in first quarter of last year compared to, for ESL students, the first week because we started our ESL classes a little bit later than we started our high school diploma classes. High school diploma, that was just the first month. Like I said, our next session, our first session ends on Thursday. Our next session starts on Monday. We already have seventy new students that will be added to that. So that's about a hundred and thirty-four if you're comparing quarter to quarter, assuming that the majority of those students make it to seven point five hours. And then you can see our CNA enrollment also has increased from last year. And here's some information about the Urbana residents. Paul, you asked about expelled students, which I can, I can find that out. But I did want you to see for the last couple of years at least, how many Urbana residents have enrolled with us that are in that age range of high schools. So we have the sixteen to eighteen-year-olds there and then sixteen to twenty-year-olds. And then high school diploma students of all ages that are Urbana residents and then all of our programs. And how many are Urbana residents? Just in case anyone's interested, Champagne is the next. So that's about fifty-three percent of our students are Urbana residents. And Champagne is the next largest, which is to be expected at about thirty-one percent. And then the remaining are small towns around in the area.
So you also accept the students from other parts of the country?
I mean, yes, yes, we do. Students can come to us. We have students from Rantoul, Broadlands, Mohammed, Tolono, all, all over.
Shauna, is the seven and a half hours a day?
No, sorry, seven, it just means they hit seven and a half hours. So they're not considered, we have, as I said, we have a lot more students than that. If I just looked at any number of students that enrolled with us, we'd probably be at that, last year, we would have been about at that five-hundred mark. But we don't count them as students until they hit seven point five hours. And then here's our outcome data from last year. This is what Ms. Langendorf was talking about in terms of our performance dollars. So in 2021, we didn't meet the ICCB goal. If you look at that, their goal was forty-four point seven percent. And we were at thirty-nine point ninety-one percent of our students that made measurable skill gains. And what that means is they either got a diploma, they got their CNA license, because that's the only license we offer right now, or they gained a level on the post-test that we give to all of our students. The students in this measure have to be at twelve hours, so that's the second gate. I told you, we have four different gates. The first one they have to go through is a seven point five. That means they're a student. Twelve hours or more, that means they have to be post-tested. What we have seen historically is that we have a number of students that attend with us for twelve hours but never make it to the forty hours required to take the post-test. Because they cannot post-test until they've been with us for forty hours. So we are working really hard on retention and how to get students, once they hit those twelve hours, how to get them to the forty to post-test with us. Because most of that, most of the reason that we don't make the gains is because they don't get to the forty hours. They stop out before they get to the forty hours. Because if you look down at the other row that says measurable skill gains, that reflects all the students who took a post-test. So that takes out all of those students who hit twelve hours but never hit forty. So it's, that says to me that we're doing better with our students who stay with us. We still have room to grow, of course, but we are doing better for the students who stay with us and get to those forty hours. But we need to make sure we keep them.
Do we survey to find why they don't stay with us? Like, are these individuals who are like entering the workforce because they need to eat and that's why they aren't doing the schooling? Or are there other factors?
That's a great question. Yes, we do survey the students. Sometimes it's hard to get in touch with them. But because basically what happens is they stop coming and we, you know, we make phone calls and all of that. We do get in touch with the majority of them, send emails. Teachers try, our counselors try, I try. And the majority that we get in touch with report exactly what you're saying. They either have childcare issues or they're taking care of other family members, or they need to work to support themselves or their families and they don't have time for school. Or something else happens in their lives that's really challenging for them to balance. And so, but even with that, we still want to work with them to help them get the support that they need to address those areas of of their lives and continue their education. And what we see is that, and what I find fascinating, having been at adult ed now for five years, is that we have students who come back. So they might stop out for that year. But, I mean, they they re-enroll then the next year. It's, it's really impactful to me how much they don't give up. They keep coming back and then eventually they do finish. I mean, I know we've had students that started way before I was, but then stopped out for a period of time and then came back and finished. And that's, I want them to, I want us to be able to give them the support to get them to finish sooner, but it is heartening that they come back and finish.
Yeah. Is our only method for the classes in person?
Right now, it is. And that's a great question, or it's not a question, but, well, it is a question. But that's a great thought because we are looking at, we changed, like I said earlier, we changed the structure so significantly for this year that I didn't want to add one more major change. But we are looking to start planning. So next semester, we'll start planning for a distance learning option to hopefully implement in fall of next year, fall of twenty-four. And then here are our goals written into the work plan that I submit. It's basically the equivalent of like a school improvement plan. Just let you look at those. If anybody has questions as we go through, I don't want to, I know you have a lot to get through tonight. And then these are, so those are kind of our database goals. And then here are our program goals, the things that we want to do as a program in order to improve what we're offering to students. And then here was, what I would say are our celebrations. We've had a lot of district support. We, you know, we have the new building. The district has been instrumental, obviously. It wouldn't have happened without the district's support. So thank you to everybody that's sitting around the table that made that happen. We so far have increased attendance and enrollment because of the way we're restructuring our classes. We've seen a huge increase in attendance. And we've gotten reports from students that they're enjoying the new structure much more than they did the previous, the previous structure. That's not all students, but the students that I've talked to informally are pretty excited about what's happening. They're much more engaged. And because of our changed structure, we're already seeing an increase in credit attainment. And then, of course, the new building is a big celebration. I wanted to share with you some survey results that we, that I did. Thank you, Ms. Langendorf, for asking me to do it and giving me the idea to do this, to get our, you know, our staff sort of tell me things, but they tell me in different, at different times and then sort of in pieces. And so it was nice to have everything kind of written in in one place. We had ten responses. That's out of twelve full-time staff members because I didn't take the survey. The reasons, you can see there, most of our staff, eight out of ten agree or strongly agree that our building's clean and welcoming. The one who strongly, or who disagreed, I didn't see any comments attached to that. The neutral, the person who said neutral commented that basically we're just still working on decorating the walls and things like that to make it more welcoming. But overall, it's much better than the previous building. The new building feels safe. This was interesting because I, a lot of our, I was surprised that so many of our staff are either neutral or disagreed with it being safe. I found the comments related to that had to do with lighting in the parking lot. We have night classes and they feel like the lighting needs to be better out here, which is actually true. I agree with them. I just hadn't really thought about it. And then they would like an intercom so we can talk to the people at the front door before that we let them in, which we've been working on diligently. Randy has been hounding the people to get it installed and it's just not happening. But that is not on the district at all. And then we had cameras in our old building internally and they want us to put those back up, which we can do. So that will help with some of that. The sufficient space, this is by and large, the most comments I've had from staff are being, have been just, it's been an adjustment for them. They all have been very clear that they appreciate the new space. They appreciate how much nicer it is. But it is so much smaller than what we had and that has been hard, a hard adjustment, especially as we're looking to increase our enrollment. So that's, you know, I think that, not really need to, you can imagine what the comments were. They were all related to sort of classroom size and things like that. I feel the building needs upgrades. This one also surprised me a little bit, but then when I read the comments, I understood what they meant. And these are all things that we're working on, that the district folks are working on. It had to do with our Wi-Fi and our smart boards not working quite right because our Wi-Fi isn't strong enough. We're working on that. Our phones, we're working on that. And then the HVAC system, which I know Tiger Academy has also experienced it being really, you know, if there's extreme temperatures outside, it's hard to regulate this because it's all up there and not easily accessible. But Randy and those folks have also been working on that. So all those things are being worked on, just not quite there yet. And then I just gave you some sort of highlights of the comments that sort of captured the themes throughout the survey. Mostly, people were very happy and thankful and grateful to be here. There are some things we need to work on and will continue working on with the support of the district. But overall, people are happy that the space is much better than our old space and students have been very positive. And then here are our needs. It's, it's pretty much what I, what I said. Even though our classes are smaller and we need to figure out some solutions to that that aren't necessarily obvious right at the moment, we ha, it has been really nice. We've worked out the schedule as much as we can. And Dr. Weemel and I work very well together in terms of sharing space at the Tiger Academy side of things in the evenings in particular. When we have multiple classes and larger classes and need more space and it's not being used by Tiger Academy folks in the evenings. So that has been a big help. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Board members, any questions or comments?
Sorry, 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 sorry. Oh, I focus on English. I focus on the microphone. Thank you so much because the program, the adult education program, that was the first program I reached when I came to the country. And you guys helped me to speak sort of English. I'm still working on. Maybe I need to come back. But thank you so much because I know it's a huge, huge program that impacted a lot of my life and a lot of my friends. So thank you of that. And I have a couple of questions. I needed to run to the bathroom. I don't know, you touched those topics, you know. But I'm curious about the ESL program. How many of the new arrivals are getting in? I know one of the requirements is to have an ID. That was a long time ago. Now it's not?
No, you mean to getting into class?
Yes.
No, we don't require, we don't require any sort of documentation for students to access our classes. We do want their name and all, you know, contact information, but we don't ask for an official government-issued ID or anything like that. We do, for students who have it, we ask for their social security number. Only if they have it. It's not a requirement. But one of our outcome measures has to do with employment and that is all run automatically through the state system. Then we can only get that information through social security numbers. But we make it very clear when students enroll, especially with our ESL students, we don't, we don't ask for that in front of a whole class or anything like that. So anyone can enroll in our classes. They don't have to have any sort of documentation in particular.
And then you mentioned about a new immigrant program?
The, the grant, are you talking about the grant I mentioned?
The program?
The citizenship?
You say that you have one new immigrant program, something like that?
So I, I talked about there being, sorry, what? Yes, the grant. So I came across a grant that is getting ready to be, that hopefully the city will apply for, that we can partner with them. And it's targeted for its purposes for new immigrants.
Okay.
But that could help. Yes, yes.
And when do you want to have news about it?
I don't remember, Dr. Ever Tatum. Do you remember when the city said they were releasing that? It was just like a notice that it was going to be released, but they didn't have, give us details yet. And they hadn't had the bidders conference yet, which is like where you go to get all that information.
And what kind of program is going to be that?
It, honestly, it'll basically be, I don't know. It depends on what the grant requires. It'll be probably, I would imagine, expanding on some of the things we already do, like maybe helping with employment, helping with community services, helping with transitions, still providing maybe more English classes than we provide now.
Thank you.
Board members, any other comments or questions?
Yes. I just want to congratulate you, Shauna, for moving everybody here and to study. I know it was a lot of work and I certainly want to thank the administration for supporting adult education because you can see the benefits in our community. On the school visits that I've gone around, I see our graduates working with students in the other buildings. And that really makes me feel wonderful and proud that we are helping our community that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. I agree. I think the work that we do is so important and it takes our team and all of you and your support to allow us to continue to do what we do. We're one of the few programs in the state like this. And so I think it's a, it's a, it's a special, it's a special program that I appreciate my team and I appreciate all the support you guys give us.
Anyone else?
I did just have one last question. For the citizenship program, do we take everyone that applies for that? Or is that, there a waitlist with us only having one teacher?
There's not a waitlist. In fact, the, the census for those classes have been smaller. We'd like to recruit more students. There's a lot of requirements to be a part of that class. But we would like to have more students, so.
So Shauna, I, I'm, I'm having Wi-Fi issues, but I was able to pull it up and it looked like it was due on Friday. But I know we submitted a letter of intent with the city and the champagne. And I think the refugee center was also going to partner. So we will have to follow up to make sure that they actually submitted everything. It's an IDHS grant, so kind of a state grant for asylum seekers.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Shauna. Next up is our summer facilities update from last summer. So, it's Randy.
Good evening. Just wanted to update you on some projects that we had done over the summer. I guess just kind of to, since there's a few new board members, kind of give you an idea of what we do over the summer. Um, I guess just kind of to, since there's a few new board members, kind of give you an idea of what we do over the summer. At a lot of the buildings, uh, for the adult ed building in Tiger Academy, we did some, uh, window clings. Um, we cleaned out the basement at the, um, adult ed side, uh, the old Domino's building to make it, uh, um, able to be used, um, as, as storage and also for, uh, in case there was a storm or something like that, they go down there. Um, we've also set a new HVAC unit on the roof. I don't know that it's, uh, completely, uh, hooked up yet, but, uh, we do have a unit up there ready to go. Over at the athletic complex, we re-stripped the track this year. Um, and, uh, something that's not on the list is we, uh, had to work on the, uh, press box, uh, HVAC, uh, on the soccer side. So that had to be replaced. It's like just a mini split. But, um, district ri- district wide, we, uh, seal code and striped, uh, a lot of the school, um, parking lots. Did some concrete repairs, sidewalk repairs. Um, we replaced two vehicles. Um, the two vehicles we replaced. We, um, have the, um, have them getting ready to go on auction this winter. And, uh, so the money will go back towards the, um, they go back into my budget for that? Okay. All the gym floors were, uh, screened and, uh, sealed this year. And we also purchased three auto scrubbers, uh, Martin Luther King. We did some window clings. We have a company that's interested in giving us some, uh, a couple thousand square feet of flooring to try. And they're wanting to do it at, uh, Martin Luther King on the west entrance. The flooring in there is kind of starting to break down a little bit. So, uh, just working on scheduling for that to get that installed. We also did two classrooms at Martin Luther King, um, painted about 75% of the corridors. And, uh, the dance floor got sanded and sealed this year. Dr. Preston Williams, we repaired the gas meter fence, uh, sometime this summer. It got hit by a car and, uh, we had to repair that. Um, we did a little painting down there as well. Lille, we had a, um, employee that spent, um, pretty much the entire time cleaning up the basement, um, at Lille so we could, uh, improve the storage and they just purged a bunch of, uh, uh, stuff after we got board approval for it to be thrown away. Repaired three walls in classrooms. Uh, it was done by Olympic Construction. Did some ceiling of the brick on the west side of the building. And then, uh, something that, uh, Dr. Hosenaka talked about, uh, a few weeks ago was, uh, the Birch Street Play Area. And, uh, I've been working with the city on that, you know, waiting for approval to see if we can go in there and, um, put a top coat of some sort, whether it's concrete or a blacktop. But I talked to him this week and they talked like it shouldn't be an issue, but, uh, still had to work out some stuff with the engineering department. Thomas Payne, he's had the, uh, construction renovation going on over there. Uh, we redid the playgrounds and replaced that with some, uh, ADA upgrades as far as, uh, the surface, playing surface and then, uh, some of the playground equipment as well. Tiger Academy, I think I mentioned the air conditioning and then, uh, we finally got the partition up. Joe's not here. Um, in the big room on the east side of the building to make, uh, the one big space, two spaces that they need to, to hold, hold like two classrooms or divide up into two different groups. Urbana High School and Health Center, painted stairwells and walls. Um, we did, uh, some asphalt repair in the north student parking lot, the entrance and exit. Um, art rooms and food lab. We had the air conditioner go out and I think that's what, um, Student Ambassador was talking about when we had some, uh, heating issues over there. That we had to move some kids for a couple of days, but those were replaced as well. We did the band room renovation. Um, we're putting in a new chiller. Uh, it's in place now and, uh, completion of, uh, that should be within about a month.
I'm sorry, John, can you move the, the page forward? Whoops. Thank you.
Along with that new chiller, uh, we have the chiller rental. Um, it's also eaten up quite a bit of money. Uh, we, we placed the flooring in the auto shop hallway, uh, health center offices. Where the examining, examination rooms were, uh, painted. Replaced a couple condensers, or compressors for the gym. And then in the, uh, throughout the whole school, we replaced, uh, we put in a new clock system. And, uh, what that, uh, with this new clock system, it gives the kids, uh, um, from the time the bell rings, it gives them the, uh, four-minute countdown. Um, and then I think at the one-minute mark, it gives you a bell. And then, uh, at the zero-minute mark also gives you another bell or warning. I don't know if they're the same or if they're different, but, um, uh, I guess it's been a big improvement, uh, getting the kids out of the hallways. They kind of lose track of time sometimes. It's kind of keeps them on schedule. And then, uh, something that's not on the list that, uh, board member Langendorf reached out to me about was the, uh, door one area. Uh, she had a question about the, um, ADA there with the concrete. And, uh, we, I emailed her back and we've had a, um, concrete company come out and, uh, look at the area. And we were looking at hopefully grinding off, um, this lip, like about an inch lip where the, uh, curbing has raised up just due to frost heave. And, uh, due to the deterioration of some of the concrete, it's probably not going to work. So we're probably going to go in and try to level it off best we can with some additional concrete. And then next summer, maybe look at replacing that whole pad. Urbana Middle School, we're, uh, doing chiller replacement. Uh, that is not in yet, but it's scheduled completion of, uh, end of December. Um, we did some, the boiler re-tube and re-welding that's completed. We painted about 10, 10 or 12, uh, doors and door frames in the building. Uh, painted all the staircases, uh, step, um, the sides of the steps and the railings at the middle school. Uh, we also put a, um, door, uh, it's the door that leads into the middle school. The number escapes me right now. Um, we replaced all the flooring in that, that gym entrance area. Let's see, uh, Urbana Middle School and Aquatic Center, we did some asphalt repair on the east entrance. Warehouse and the first student building. Um, we're in the process right now of adding air conditioning to these two areas. Uh, first student uses a window unit, um, for a room about half the size of this. And then the warehouse, we haven't had, we've never had air conditioning in there and this summer it got a little unbearable. Little bit of stuff we've done at Wiley, uh, chimney tuck point and sealing of the brick. And then, uh, move out for a prep for construction. And then at, uh, Yankee Ridge, we painted hallways, uh, sanded and sealed the lunchroom floor. And, uh, cleaned about one-sixth of the, uh, Dyken VRB units in the classrooms. And those are the units that, uh, put out the heating and cooling. It was something we tried this year. Uh, see if that could help us alleviate some of the problems that we've been having and it did work. So we're going to be looking at doing probably a little bit more of that. Um, we will be looking at doing more of that, uh, next summer. Any questions?
Board members, any, any questions? I, I do. I mean, in, in terms of, of like overall budget, did, did, did things kind of come out, uh, basically according to plan? Or like expenditures with regards to these summer projects? Sorry, I should have sent this to you. I was eager to prepare for the answer, but, you know, in terms of like the overall, I mean, I don't know how much came out of life safety? How much came out of, um, you know, O and M fund? But, but, but basically were the, the planned expenditures basically in line with, with your estimates coming and coming into these projects?
Most of it was out of O and M. Uh, we didn't have much health life safety money for this year. Uh, the last couple of years I spent a lot, did a lot of repairs and upgrades.
Any other comments, questions? All right, all right, all right. Thank you very much, Randy. Uh, next up is, is our FAQ for the sixth grade center.
Okay. So, um, you have two documents, one that we're putting on the web, but then one that John is going to display is more of a paragraph format. Um, I think board members have it at your seat. It's the one that kind of looks like a, just a actual Google Doc form, um, that I'm going to kind of talk through. So, um, hopefully some of the public comments from this evening and, um, some of the emails and things that the board have received, um, regarding the sixth grade center. These are the frequently asked questions. Um, of course, this isn't comprehensive of every single question that, uh, someone might have. Um, I heard a few more tonight that we've not, uh, really talked about in this document. Um, but these are the questions that we're hearing, um, most frequently. That's why it's called a frequently asked questions document. So John, if you go back to the top, so at the, at the top, um, I've just again linked the charge here. Um, I know there were a lot of comments this evening about, um, people being surprised about us even talking about a sixth grade center, but it was a part of the original charge in March of 2023. Um, and it was definitely something that was discussed when forming the district facilities planning committee. Um, so, uh, again, it is something, um, that we didn't anticipate that we would be talking about when we initially brought forward the, um, the plan for Wiley. Um, but once we started getting into our data, looking at our enrollment, our flat enrollment, um, looking at finances, just all of the pieces, um, it was an opportunity for us as an administrative team to really, um, think about what would be the best, um, or what would be another area in which Wiley might be able to really help serve our community and our students in a, uh, bigger way. So the sixth grade center charge was here from the very beginning. Um, so it isn't something that we just, you know, kind of just added here, um, in the last couple of weeks. It's something that we've been talking about since March. Um, someone made a point tonight and I just wanted to reiterate that. This document, um, this document is in the public folder. So hopefully some of the people who brought questions forward tonight, uh, will go back to the public folder and maybe, uh, look at this information. I did link the, um, UMS Illinois School Report Card here, um, because as has already been stated multiple times, our middle school averages between 950 students, nine to 950, and it's sometimes upwards of a thousand students, which is one of the largest middle schools in the state. Um, and when compared to, uh, just regionally in central Illinois, it is the mid, largest middle school in our area, which is one of the reasons why we're talking about this. I just wanted to point out that that link is there and hopefully people will go in, um, and do a little digging around in the UMS School Report Card. So now I'm going to just kind of jump into the questions. Um, I, I think it would be way easier to just, as I, as we talk about a topic, if you have questions about that particular question, we just stop and address it as we go instead of trying to answer all 13 at the very end. Does that sound okay with people? Okay. So the first one is class size. And I'm not going to read to you guys, so I'm going to kind of paraphrase these as I go. So a lot of discussion, um, this spring, a lot of discussion during the facility planning committee meetings. Um, and Ben and Sitlali, I know Sitlali, uh, had to leave and be with, she was with family for a big chunk of the facilities committee, but there at the beginning. And I know Ben was our, um, one of our other board members, um, in attendance. And I think all the board members have watched the presentations, um, and our, the slideshows and listened to, uh, recordings. So, you know, please jump in. Um, and I know our, my team was there for all of the meetings as well, so. But class sizes were, I would say, that's why this is the number one question, um, because the elementary group talked about this a lot. Um, and this was one of the biggest concerns, uh, from everyone involved in the facilities planning committee, um, conversations. Um, we've already looked at our class count. We've already talked about six-day enrollment. Uh, we've already talked about, um, the fact that we have not seen a significant increase in elementary enrollment. Um, and yes, do we agree that having very, very small classes is the best way to increase student achievement? I don't think anybody in this room will argue with that. Um, but one, uh, we don't have teachers to have classes that can be, you know, 14, 15 students across the district. And we don't have space for that either. So right now, our enrollment at elementary is not growing and our class sizes have not, um, maxed out at, um, many of the levels. I said this at our, at one of our other discussions about class size. Um, and unfortunately, um, the person who came tonight from Lille who has a student with a, in a class with 28, it's because that is the only monolingual class at that grade level. Um, and when you have some, some of our English speakers and English dominant students who come, unfortunately, when you only have one place for them to go, um, that is, uh, the nature of, you know, part of the, um, issues that we see with class sizes at Lille. But those are pretty normal. So to say that we are seeing atypical growth or increases in class size growth, um, we did move 230 students minus the students who, uh, like Dr. Norton shared, either went to Champagne or went to Holy Cross or went to all the private places. We placed all the Wiley students and I, I would say our class sizes, we added a few classes. Um, and so that really helped with some of those bubble areas that we saw. Uh, but we're not seeing a significant, um, increase in class sizes. So the discussions we were having at the facilities committee really were, you know, people were saying all of our elementary classes, we're going to have 30 students or upwards. We would be at the class cap for every grade and, um, across the district and that just hasn't happened. So I see people itching to get to their microphones. So comments? Nope. Okay. People were kind of leaning in. I was expecting some comments. Go share.
I just have a question. When, when, um, to follow up on some of the questions that were asked tonight as well, when the students from Wiley were divided up? I, I know that that was very, um, planned very well as far as location so that they would be within a certain, um, mileage from the school. But, um, did parents also have an option where they wanted to? And, and because one of the speakers had said that they're, on his, on his home block, there were three different, children going from three different schools. So was it the parents?
Sure.
Or is that's the way that, that they were chosen to go to different?
Absolutely. That's what happened. I mean, we did not separate students from one block to send to three different places. So, um, the Wiley students were given priority petitioning. Um, petitioning is something that we do in our district and it is, is something that is a, in Urbana, um, it's a third ban away, right? And we, we continue to allow petitioning and the Wiley families, uh, received kind of priority petitioning and they were able to petition earlier. Um, so there are some families who are at Dr., uh, not Dr. Williams, who are at Thomas Payne and then their neighbor might be at Yankee Ridge, but that was their choice. Um, we did very intentionally move students closest to where they live to really keep the neighborhood, um, keep blocks together and keep neighborhoods together. Um, so like the students who are at King right now from Wiley were all students who were in that kind of area together. And those, those families did have a choice because they had to be bus no matter what. Um, so we did give them a choice of, and they got to self-select their choice. We didn't assign them. Um, so the students who live, uh, north by 74, who were Wiley students, who they don't get to walk anywhere anyway. They have to get on the bus regardless. They were given the choice to go to King or TP, right, John? Yep. And so it was basically up to them. We gave them a Google form and we said, hey, what's your first choice? And, you know, we gave them a certain deadline to let us know where they wanted to go and they were assigned based on those choices. Um, so yes, very good question.
Sorry. You mentioned that, um, because of the, there is a crowd in the school, especially in Lille, with 28 kids because we don't have a space for them to go. This is because Wiley was closed or?
No, this is because, um, because of the English dominant, I don't know if Lupe or Joe- No, this is because, um, because of the English dominant, I don't know if Lupe or Jo would explain it better, but, um, at LEO, we have a, a large number of dual language classrooms, and then we have so, uh, so many classes that are, um, English dominant, which means we don't have enough, um, well, Lupe's coming, so we'll let her explain it. So I had, it has nothing to do with Wiley, it basically is just the neighborhood enrollment at LEO.
Okay, so LEO has capacity for twenty-one classrooms. Currently, eleven of them are being used for dual language. One of the, um, challenges of why you can't, why there's only one kindergarten DL, DL and one kindergarten monolingual is, as I had explained, um, in previous meetings, that by having strand models in both LEO and Dr. Williams, it really removes the ability to, um, balance classrooms across the dual language program. So for example, at LEO right now, our fifth grades are at thirteen and seventeen, which combined is still a very large class, but had we had the opportunity to combine all four of our DL classrooms between Dr. Williams and LEO, you would have potentially had two or three much smaller balanced classrooms, which would have left an empty classroom, be that for monolingual or for Gen Ed. So having strand models really impacts not only dual language in the different buildings.
Pero, por ejemplo, está sobresaturado el, el LEO ahorita porque removieron a los niños de Wiley. ¿Qué va a pasar en las siguientes generaciones cuando tengamos más, uh, personas, niños que hablan inglés? ¿Se va a seguir sobresaturando esos salones en diferentes escuelas por no tener una quinta escuela?
So, Sitlali is asking if, right now, the enrollment at LEO is the way that it is with the additional Wiley kids, if we do not make, with the continuation over the years, will the classrooms continue to grow and be at capacity if we only have five elementary buildings? Cinco? Yeah. That's a question for y'all, not for me.
Okay, so, I, I guess I am not seeing much of a change right now. So, if, I just pulled up the elementary class count for LEO. So as of today, or maybe this is from yesterday, at kindergarten, first grade, third grade, and fourth grade, there is only one English, there's just one place for our English dominant students to go at those four grade levels. Um, so second grade and fifth grade, as Lupe just said, are the only two grades where we had enough English dominant students to have two classes. Um, and then all the rest of the classes are dual language, and that, that has been the pattern for the last couple of years, and, um, it, based on what we're seeing, um, will probably continue to be the pattern until we re-district.
And just to add to that, just refreshing, back to our, um, presentation from six day, there's only four Wiley students that went to LEO.
Oh, yes, thank you, Kim. Okay, can, I'm gonna go ahead to question two. Oh, yeah, Paulina.
Um, when I was in dual language, we did like sixty percent of the day in English and forty percent of the day in Spanish at LEO. Is that still accurate, or has things changed?
We, it's more of a fifty-fifty. You, why don't wanna, you just stay up there? Uh, just grab a chair. We'll let them explain that, Paulina.
So our program has always been a ninety-ten model up to this point. So at kindergarten, ninety percent of the day is in Spanish and ten percent of the day is in English, and that drops by ten, the Spanish flips over to English by ten percent every grade level until fourth grade, where it switches to fifty-fifty. Now, there was, um, conversation and recommendation both between, um, the Center for Applied Linguistics Evaluation, as well as our work with the Center for Teaching for Bilinguality, to look at, um, possibly changing that to an eighty- twenty model, um, but that would still be starting kindergarten at eighty-twenty and dropping by ten percent. So the fifty-fifty would start at third grade instead of fourth grade.
Thank you.
Good question. Um, so going on to number two, um, we have received a lot of questions about this, um, idea of what if the enrollment grows in the next five to ten years? So just because we're experiencing flat growth right now at elementary, that may not be the case in five years, or ten years, or fifteen years. Um, we really can't predict that right now. Um, so we continuously monitor our classroom capacities, we look at class sizes all the time, um, and so if we need to make adjustments, we make those adjustments, um, as soon as we can, and when we have the staffing to do so. That is part of the, the issue is, um, right now with this, um, severe staffing shortage, um, sometimes we post a position and we just, we just never have any applicants. Um, that happens sometimes with the class size adjustment TAs. Um, there are years where we post one and we just don't ever have anyone apply. Um, right now, we were kinda piecemealing together some class size adjustment TA positions, um, through using our daily subs. Um, that's what we're doing right now at the, uh, LEO for the, the classroom that is at capacity there, um, is we've been utilizing day-to-day subs, and they've been great, um, but we, we need to hire someone who can be there consistently every day. Um, we also talked, this question came up during the facilities committee while we, um, had our architect there. Um, so Scott Walker, uh, who's been before the board many times, um, was at many of our facilities meetings, um, and this came up in the six to eight, uh, grade group, is if we see a significant growth in the next few years, can the sixth grade center be adapted and remodeled, um, to become an elementary attendance center if that, if that is what the board desired to do in five, ten, fifteen years? And yes, with some minor adjustments to the space, that is definitely something that we could do. The things that we're adding or would add at a sixth grade center are things that we would use in an elementary space as well. So a new gym, a new cafeteria, um, fine art spaces, a new office, um, so that is a possibility that we could do that. Uh, question three, um, you have been hearing us talk a lot about, um, staffing and the, uh, regional and statewide and national shortages, um, and, um, we have had a lot of conversations with individuals. We talked about this during the facilities committee, and it's been discussed here at the board level that we are very concerned as an administrative team that if we open Wiley again as a sixth elementary, that we will, um, have a really hard time, not just staffing Wiley, you know, I do, I think many of the Wiley teachers would be thrilled if we reopen that building, and they might leave the places where they are right now and wanna return to Wiley, but then that is basically opening up a vacancy somewhere else. So I know Dr. Franklin, I don't know if you wanna speak to this, but she put some great numbers in here, um, that for the board and the public to really understand the, um, the seriousness of what we're talking about when we talk about the, the staffing shortages. You wanna add anything, Dr. Franklin?
I, I'm happy to answer questions. I don't necessarily have anything to add. I shared at the last meeting, um, what we have going on. I, I shared about the Wiley teachers that left the district, and there were not many. Um, we have many teachers that have relocated to other vacancies we had, and we still have long-term subs. The majority of the, um, the vacancies and long-term substitute positions are at UMS. Um, my seventh grader, my own kid at UMS, um, currently has two long-term subs, and she's getting ready to have a third. So, um, I'm seeing it firsthand as a parent and also in my position. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So, um, it seems like one of the strongest reasons being pushed forth by the administration here on why not to reopen Wiley is both not having the bodies to hire or the money to pay them to fill those positions.
Is that a question or a comment?
It's a comment. I'm looking for someone to say, I agree with that, or is there some other reason that you think?
I think there are lots of reasons. That would be one of our highest, um, need areas is not having enough staff.
So, I just ask, when we're going back in time to why we were closing Wiley, I don't ever remember hearing that being talked about, and I was asking about, is this a financial decision? And I was told multiple times by multiple people that it was not, that we didn't have any budgetary issues, and that was not of concern, and it was all about asbestos abatement happening in a timely fashion, and I believe Ann Hall is the deciding vote on closing Wiley, said it was all a safety concern for her. So, is it still about asbestos, or is it about the finances, or why did we close Wiley?
So, I don't think I said anything about finances. My answer was specifically about, I'm talking about five minutes ago when the words came out of my mouth, I was talking about the staffing issues, not money. So, that was February of twenty-twenty-two, it is September, and we cannot anticipate the number of vacancies. We, we, we could not have anticipated in February that if we reopen Wiley, we would have fifty-five vacancies.
I'll also comment that we put more money on our contract to recruit and retain teachers than we ever have. It, it was a very solid, um, negotiation session where a lot of money was put on the table, and I don't know how that impacts Katie's budget and what she thought we would save or what we wouldn't save, but we put more money forward than we thought we could.
Well, yeah, also at that point in time, we're making the decision, uh, we didn't have the, the, you know, all of the details with regards to the contract finalized either.
Right, no, the contract wasn't finalized until after, um, the decision about Wiley.
And I guess that's why I'm saying it wasn't a finance, what we're saying right now is what we're saying with numbers in front of us as of September nineteenth. We weren't talking about this level of vacancies, um, back in February, because at that time, we only had nineteen unfilled vacancies. That number has grown exponentially since February to September.
I'm just saying it's a easier pill to swallow for the community if this was the situation before, you know, that they would say, that they would hear, we cannot afford to keep this building open and increase our teacher salaries, uh, with this current UA negotiations.
Let me clarify something I said, cause I could tell that Paul, um, kinda went for some further clarification. So you asked a question of Katie about, um, the proposed savings of being a million and how it, the actual savings ended up being a little bit over two hundred thousand. Well, those, the, the money that she's talking about that we had in surplus, we did not make those decisions until, like, the contract negotiations were not over until after that decision about Wiley was made. And so those were not numbers that we anticipated, like, that was a larger amount, and I mean, we, it wasn't just raises for staff, we also put money towards recruitment and retention incentives for hard-to-fill positions, um, we put money towards supervision stipends, um, for teachers to be outside before and after school, cause currently, our contract does not allow for that. So those were additional, I mean, that's, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted alone for supervision stipends, the fifty thousand for hard-to-fill, and the supplemental pay, those are like for stipends for teachers for doing extra duties, coaching, club sponsors, um, all of that is an add during negotiations rather than just the, the raise. And the average raise, I think, for a TA was seventeen percent, because we wanted to match what Unit Four was doing, cause the TAs was the really hard-to-fill position for us last year. So those were all things that came after that Wiley decision.
And, and this is probably a good time to address what Robbie is alluding to, that there was a hidden agenda or that we were planning this way back in February of twenty-twenty-two. Um, when we came forward, um, we honestly came forward with the concern of, we, we've been talking, and we're gonna talk about this in the facilities update here in a few minutes, it wasn't a surprise to hopefully, anyone watching or anybody sitting at this table, that when we were ready to remodel Wiley, we were going to have to close it. So that was what we brought forward, um, due to the asbestos, um, that is in the building and the significant re, uh, remodeling needs that were there. However, as we started, uh, crunching numbers and talking about vacancies and talking about, um, do we really need a sixth elementary based on our enrollment, and had more and more conversations about that, the, the conversation did shift, and that is the truth. And if there are people out there who want to continue to say, um, this was Dr. Aggie Tatum's plan from the very beginning, then it's just wrong. And I'm saying that out loud right now, and if, if people choose to believe what they wanna believe, then I'm, I'm not gonna really argue about that anymore, but I am saying point blank. When we brought this forward, we weren't even talking about a sixth grade center at that point. Um, that came much later, so. Questions, comments?
I guess I should probably chime in, cause I was participating in that vote back then. Um, you know, I, I think I said this at the time, but for me, it really was the fact that, you know, while we, we have neighborhood schools, I'm passionate about neighborhood schools. Our neighborhood schools have been kinda broken in one area of town, increasingly so for the past five years. It got to the point where we were sending nearly a hundred kids out of the DPW area. It, 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 in that part of a town, it's, it's a crisis. If it were my neighborhood at Yankee Ridge, had to ship a hundred kids to other, other schools, I would've gotten nothing but hate mail. If it would've been LEO, it would've been the same thing. It just happened to be in a part of town where people don't really feel empowered to come to us and complain about it. So, it's, it became imperative that we need to do redistricting, but we can't do redistricting until Wiley had been abated, and we make some really hard decisions with regards to whether or not we have five or six elementary schools, and whether or not we have a single building DL model. All those things have to happen in order to preserve our neighborhood school concept here in town, cause, cause right now it's broken.
And, and we talked significantly about this during dual language, and I know Sheri asked me for these numbers, and we don't have them tonight. I'm sorry, Sheri, we'll have to get them. John will have to, to, to pull that for you. But, um, when we had the, uh, dual language conversations, there's a lark that, I think everyone who came here tonight talked about the neighborhood concept, because in their neighborhood, the majority of the students walk to school. In most of our neighborhoods, in the lar, in the majority of our community, that is not an option for a large number of our kids. They, they don't have a neighborhood school option. They cannot walk to school no matter what. Um, and so I think that is kinda the secondary part of what Paul just said around the neighborhood school model being broken for the DPW neighborhood, um, and the enrollment issues that are there, but it is a significant number of our kids that just don't have that option. So I know we continue to say that, um, and, and we have purposefully not removed the word neighborhood schools from our website, if that's happened unintentionally. I don't know when that happened, or if, if that is even true. I'm gonna look at that tomorrow. Um, but as we discovered, when we talked about the number of students that walk and the number of students that get on a bus and go to a special program, um, they're, they're, they are not in the minority, the kids that are not able to go to walk to school, so.
I also wanna add that I just recently heard that within last, I don't know how many years, Urbana has grown, has doubled its size in square footage or, but, um, square miles, but the population has remained constant. So that means our families are being dispersed in other places in the community, and, um, we see changes about more rental, uh, properties as well. I think two-thirds of our, of our homes, apartments are rental. So, there's lots of mobility in our, in our community as well. So, it's hard to have a neighborhood school when you have people that are on the outskirts.
And a lot of our homeowners who have choices and have the financial means, uh, to make other choices about where they wanna send their kids, someone said it tonight, uh, one of our people during public comment, they are choosing not to send their kids to our public schools, and the people that I'm talking to, it's because of Urbana Middle School. They're not, and I think somebody came forward and said that this evening. Um, you know, there are people who love our elementary schools, and their students attended elementary, and then they find other options at the middle level. Um, many come back because our high school has some great offerings, um, for kids that are college-bound and looking to go to college. Um, but we have a huge gap of, um, folks in our community who are not sending their kids to UMS, and we need to really be thinking about why, and I think that's why the conversations about the sixth grade center, um, are happening right now.
So in other words, our, our school, our middle school could be much larger if we would have better programming there.
You're absolutely right.
We did have thirty-seven students that left, um, the district from fifth grade to sixth grade last year, and I can break that down for previous years as well.
With all the students that are going from Wiley to the other schools, well, the other schools need to gather more people or more resources to help with like financial support or like mental and physical health support to these children? or like mental and physical health support to these children because there is going to be a lot more children in other schools now.
So we already moved them, Paulina, they're already in the other schools right now. And so in planning for that, um, this spring, when Dr. Franklin was meeting with the Wiley teachers, um, we hired a few more, uh, positions. Uh, we posted a diff- a few extra positions like she mentioned because we anticipated that. So we moved some of those resources, um, to places like Thomas Paine, um, in anticipation of those students being in those places. So we, we already did that this spring.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. So let's talk about number four, um, the transitions. So I know board members have heard a lot of, uh, received a lot of, of, um, emails regarding the sixth-grade center, um, and the additional, uh, transition that it would cause, um, because students would leave and go to fifth to sixth and then have to have that extra transition going from sixth to seventh. Um, and yes, that, that is a fact. I mean, there's no arguing that that will happen. Um, but our thought, and I think the group, um, a couple of the middle school teachers who were part of the facilities committee, six to eight group, really spoke to this, uh, better than I can. So I ca- the comments that are in here, uh, actually came from one of the sixth-grade teachers that were part of that group is they really feel that by having a very controlled, um, uh, setting where we're able to really intentionally, uh, focus on students' social emotional needs, help them be more independent, um, really pour into them and really just work with them, uh, so much more intentionally as sixth graders that that next transition is just going to be so much better for them in not just preparing them for seventh grade, but preparing them to be ninth graders. Um, it also, I know we're, we're spending so much of our time talking about what this means for sixth grade, but we have to also keep in mind, if we take three hundred students out of UMS, the seventh and eighth graders that are, are still there will be able to have a much better, um, more focused experience as well. So we don't see the sixth-grade center as being a separate school. Um, we see it as being kind of a satellite and it will be still com- uh, considered part of Urbana Middle School and be able to participate and do all the things that, uh, seventh and eighth graders do, but just in a smaller setting, um, in a more structured way. Okay. Uh, number five, again, this addresses the ex- uh, staffing shortages that we're seeing. And, and this question I don't think is mostly coming from parents or families or community people. This is a, a comment that we've been hearing more so actually from teachers, um, from people, um, in UMS. Um, I think Dr. Weemel can speak to this a little bit too, but I know, um, there is concern about the fact that by moving the sixth-grade team and moving all the teachers and specialists that work with our sixth graders away from UMS, when they have subs shortages, um, when they are not able to cover classrooms on a day-to-day basis. Um, I think we have written in here, and I think Dr. Franklin has said this before, UMS is the building that is not only hardest to staff for, uh, hired, uh, vacancy positions, it is also our most difficult building to get day-to-day subs to go there. Um, it's also our most difficult building to get, um, long-term subs, um, there. So the people at UMS really do kind of rally together because on a day-to-day basis, especially on Mondays and Fridays, um, there are often classes not covered. And so, um, this was a concern, I think, that has come from within UMS. Um, and this is one of those, we talk a lot, we've been talking a lot with the UMS teachers about the pros and cons. There are a lot of pros to having a sixth-grade center and this is definitely one of those cons. However, uh, we really feel that by changing the narrative, um, changing the way we can wrap around students, um, the supports that students will receive, uh, we see that as potentially attracting people, um, to UMS. And we're hoping, and again, I know there's no research, but in Urbana, uh, we don't always have to rely on research because we have always been trendsetters and we feel we are setting a trend and that if we change the narrative of UMS, um, we will have people wanting to teach there and wanting to be part of something that is, um, different and unique. So I don't know if there's anybody else wants to add anything to that, but, um, okay. Questions about that? Um, number six, there have been, uh, lots of comments about the slide that we shared in, um, in August that had the, uh, the language about sharing teachers and sharing spaces. Um, and I think that confused people a little bit when we, when, um, when Katie was even talking about the budget a little bit and said, you know, there's, we're not going to have to, uh, replace a lot of people because we would be sharing them. What we really meant was, um, not that we will have sixth-grade teachers that will have to go back and forth between the sixth-grade center in the middle, in the seventh and eighth-grade building. Um, we're not going to be shuffling, uh, social workers back and forth and clinical professionals and counselors. Um, we basically, um, and this actually happened under Dr. Weemel's leadership, have created a model where we have a sixth-grade, um, each team has a dedicated team of teachers, um, and a dedicated team of specialists. And so we would pick up all those people who work with them to the sixth-grade center. So those position, so those positions would not be going back and forth. Uh, we have, you know, we would have more than one coach, um, instructional coach position. So that person, we would just move one of the coaches over. Now, um, there are positions that, um, are shared, like the multilingual department and the dual-language teachers. And that is something that we have been talking to, um, that team about, like, what would that look like? And how would we, um, how would we figure out who is going to be at the sixth-grade center and who's going to work with the seventh and eighth graders? Um, there would be some, some limited amount of travel, um, but that would probably mostly be for our elective and non-team teachers. So like an art teacher might work half the time at the sixth-grade center and half the day at the seventh and eighth-grade center. Or the choir teacher might come to the sixth-grade ti- center and teach two classes and then go back to the seventh and eighth-grade center and teach for the rest of the day. So we just wanted to clarify that, that we are not going to be sharing all of our staff back and forth. Um, but there would be a small number of people who would be, um, going back and forth. And that would probably be elective, non-team teachers and maybe some of our specialized, um, special ed or, um, dual-language folks. Okay. Number seven, there have been questions about administration. So early on, we were talking about this with the sixth through eighth-grade team, um, during the facilities, um, planning conversations, the original discussion really did center around, Mr. Cooper, um, is going to remain the principal. And because we are considering the sixth-grade center as a satellite of UMS, we don't need two building principals. However, uh, we do feel like we need additional, um, administrative support. So the original plan that was shared with the board, um, in August, we currently have a sixth-grade administrator, we have a seventh-grade administrator, we have an eighth-grade administrator. So the sixth-grade administrator would then become the sixth-grade administrator at the sixth-grade center. Uh, we have a sixth-grade student interventionist. Um, there's a seventh-grade one, there's an eighth-grade one. And so the sixth-grade student interventionist would come here. Um, in having more conversations at UMS, um, they, this has come up multiple times and we've really talked about, uh, we agree that there should be a third administrator. Um, now that school has started, I think when we were talking about this in the summertime, we thought, oh, great, we can move an AP, move an SI, it'll be fine. But now that the hustle and bustle of the day-to-day happens, um, when the assistant principal is by herself without a student interventionist, is really, really hard if the student interventionist is sick or not there. That person is doing a lot and doing the work of two people. So, um, we've decided that, uh, we would be adding a third administrator. We don't know what that would be, if it would be a second student interventionist, if it would be more of a dean-like position that could help with, uh, teacher evaluations. But we would determine that, um, if and when the sixth-grade center were approved. Oh, I added a line that maybe was not in here on Friday when this was posted. So it's been updated and reposted to the, um, website and that is the question about the third SRO. Um, I've been with the Urbana Police folks this week. We've been doing our drills, the intruder drills. And so, um, we've had some conversations about, um, would we be able to have a third SRO? Many people have asked about this. Um, and that initially our thought was due to the staffing, um, constraints and shortages that Urbana Police Department is also experiencing, uh, we really were not anticipating that we would get that third SRO position. However, um, we would definitely work with UPD if they were willing to give us one or able to give us one. Um, we would figure out how we would be able to fund that. Um, but our second thought is, uh, we fully expect that our current SRO structure would, uh, be able to meet the needs of the sixth graders because most of the, um, behaviors that our, uh, SRO has to intervene and, uh, really do involve our seventh and eighth graders. So things like, you know, vaping and just some of those higher-level, um, drugs or any of those things that are happening that are, um, a little more egregious, where they might involve like a youth assessment, center evaluation or even if we're calling the police or we're needing intervention, um, those are happening mostly with seventh and eighth graders. Joel, you look like you were going to say something, okay. Okay. So I, I think the SRO question is to be determined. I'm not quite sure what will happen with that. Um, but we have definitely made the decision that we will have three administrators at the sixth-grade center. Um, number eight is also more of a question that we've been hearing from the, um, staff at UMS. Um, many of our, uh, staff members at UMS have never, ever stepped foot in Wiley and as we've been having these conversations this summer, um, through the facilities committee, people were sitting in the room, even parents were saying things like, is this really possible? Can we really put middle schoolers in elementary classes? And I think people were really envisioning, right, like, the small elementary classes that they're used to. And so this summer, we took the committee on a tour to Wiley. Um, we opened up Wiley last week for UMS teachers who had never been to Wiley. Um, and to the surprise of most people who've, have visited, even though we've been saying the classes at Wiley per square footage are larger than any of our other eleme- other elementary classrooms, um, in the district and they basically are the largest. Um, until people actually went over to Wiley and saw that for themselves, I don't think they really were able to, um, grasp that sixth graders really could be, um, in those classrooms. Um, Wednesday, uh, Randy and I actually, you know, and her response was, wow, this is bigger than the classroom I have right now at UMS. So I think they were a little surprised, um, to see how large the actual classrooms were, um, square footage-wise. So, um, that is more so about the existing building classes, but the new spaces basically would meet all the needs of three hundred students. Um, we're going to keep with our goal of thirty students or less on team classes, um, in science labs, exploratory classes. Um, and the conversations that the UMS folks have been having with the architect the last few weeks have really, um, are really all-doable in the space that we have at Wiley. So they have a really, a big footprint and, um, that's one of the reasons, uh, I know Sitlali asked like, well, why Wiley? Why are we talking about doing this at Wiley? And it's because they really do have the footprint there. They have the, uh, space to really be able to add on, um, and do it in a really, uh, thoughtful way for the students to include all the things that we've listed there, number eight. Number nine, um, there have been a lot of questions received about special education programming. Um, and I, uh, did not, uh, in- include the answer here. Um, Beth Ladd, um, in con- uh, collaboration with the team at UMS and with her Director of Special Services, Ms. Elvire, um, their intention, and that, and, and they've added this here, would be to really look at the placement of every student based on their special education services. Um, we would not be making programmatic, uh, decisions around which program goes here, if we're going to move life skills students or not, um, because those, uh, conversations happen at the IEP team level. So those conversations would be had with the student, with the parent, with the team, with the case manager. Um, so to say, we are not allowing, you know, students with, uh, significant special needs or special, um, services to be at the sixth-grade center. If the team, the students' team determines that that student's needs would be better served at the sixth-grade center, then that is where the student will go. If the team just start, determines that based on that student's, uh, special services, they should be at the seventh and eighth-grade center, then that is what would happen. So all of those conversations would happen, um, on, with the team, with the parent, um, and really thinking about what's the least restrictive environment to meet the needs of each child individually. Yes?
In that case, either the team determining that a kid cannot go to the sixth grade, where is he going to be?
They will go to the seventh and eighth-grade center.
Even if they are sixth?
Even, say that again, if they are not sixth graders, you mean?
So, the question, yeah, is, is it possible that a sixth grader would be better served at the seventh and eighth-grade building? And it, there may be individual situations where it would be.
It would be.
Um, an example would be for students with more significant needs, like, um, that would be in a, uh, life skills, self-contained classroom for students with more significant special education needs. The program might be better suited at the seven, eight building for a student that need, that is, um, in need of those more individualized services than what's offered at the sixth-grade center. So there may be a case-by-case basis that the team decides to just go ahead and go to the seven, eight building during their sixth-grade year because most of their classes would be in a, the most restrictive environment, if we use special education language. So it would, they would be less served in the sixth-grade center in that particular case. But it would be decided by a team. Si, si, seis, pero en el edificio de septimo y octavo. Los maestros, so, so the question is, what, what would happen if, uh, a sixth grader goes to seven, eight? Are they still considered a sixth grader? And I said, yes, they would still be considered a sixth grader, served with other seventh and eighth graders and maybe others, a, a small number of sixth graders as well. Um, there are students, for example, right now at Urbana Middle School that spend the majority of their day in a self-contained, in one classroom for all but maybe two classes. And those two classes, they go out of that classroom for maybe art or another elective class. Um, that would be more of the general education setting. And that type of setting might be better set up at one building instead of split across two.
Yeah, okay, gracias.
And, and for some of the students that Joel's, uh, referring to, you know, what grade they're in or how old they are is not as important. It's more so about what they need to be successful as an individual. We serve our, uh, some of our special education students until they, I mean, they can stay in our schools until they're twenty-two. So we have high school students who are with us beyond whether they're eighteen, nineteen. You know, they're, they're so, that, so the whole what grade they're in or how old they are is not as important as to what they need, um, in terms of their services.
Sometimes their IEP goals are very specific, not so much related to the grade level curriculum. There's, it's, it's a wide variety, but, yeah.
Yep. Um, and I'm going to let number ten, um, one of the reasons Joel and Lupe are still here, other than, you know, supporting Sitlali, they are also here to talk about this question about the needs, um, in the multilingual and dual-language programs. I'm going to let you guys address that.
Sure. As Dr. Agri Tatum mentioned, there are, um, significant pros and there are some cons when we're thinking about specialized programming and having a sixth-grade center separate from seventh and eighth grade. And so a lot of the pros are similar to the general, uh, pros for the entire school and student body. So a smaller learning environment with fewer total students. Um, the idea of a stronger culture and climate for student success benefits every student, benefits dual-language learners and multilingual learners. Um, we also struggle within our department for teacher recruitment and retention. And in particular, right now, um, I think this is the most we've struggled this year in terms of retention, recruitment and retention of dual-language teachers at the middle school. Uh, at the high school, we're doing really well. Right now at the middle school, we're struggling with recruitment and retention. So, uh, we believe that by being, even though we're, we would be splitting- So we believe that by being, even though we're, we would be splitting up the team into seven, eight and sixth, if teachers are more in tune and wanting to work in a building that's stronger in terms of culture and climate, and that's more responsive to the needs of the students, that we'd be able to retain teachers better than we currently are. We currently are struggling. We're kind of in a crisis mode right now at the middle school level in regards to that piece. There are also, what we see a lot is when our dual language students go from fifth grade to UMS, we see it's a big jump in the linguistic expectations from our curriculum alignment. And so when students leave fifth grade and go into sixth grade, the rigor of Spanish expectations jumps quite a bit. I see you nodding your head. And so that's something we believe by going to a sixth grade center, we could really focus on a stronger and more responsive transition for sixth grade dual language students. We see a lot of students that start having conversations about dropping from or un-enrolling from dual language in sixth grade because it's such a huge jump. And so that's a program issue that we need to be working on, but this could help solve that in a more responsive way. So there are legitimate concerns. Our biggest concern is, like what Dr. Avery Tatum said earlier, our dual language team does wrap around and support each other and oftentimes teaches more than one grade level. And so we would have to rethink our, our scheduling of what our teachers are teaching and when. And we would have to be really intentional about making sure we still maintain that team feel from sixth, seventh and eighth grade. But a lot of the conversation across every department is that it's still a science department that spans sixth, seventh and eighth grade. It's just in two buildings. So the same idea would apply to dual language, multilingual learning. So overall, we believe that there are more pros than cons, but there are significant cons that we would have to work through.
Okay. Sitlali, is it? You look like you wanna add something. Okay. Question 11.
The other thing I forgot to mention is thinking through newcomer students that are new to the country, immigrant students, oftentimes when they first, if they're new and they, and their first experience in, in our schools are at UMS, it's a huge jump to go into a school of 900 plus students with no English or very limited English and limited formal schooling. And so by separating out sixth, seventh and eighth, we can be more focused on their cultural and linguistic needs for new immigrant students as well. So that's another benefit that all of our staff agrees would be a huge benefit in this case. Okay, now I'm done.
Yeah, good point. Question 11, I'm gonna let Dr. Norton address. We did hear a comment tonight about acceleration. So I don't know if you wanna add anything there, Kim, about accelerating students?
Absolutely. So again, we would look at individual student needs after going through the acceleration process and carefully looking at data to see where students were academically. And that could be a lot of variations. It's not cookie cutter. It's not one size fits all. It's definitely individualized for students. So it could be anywhere from going deeper within the curriculum. It could be differentiating with supplementary resources. It could be single subject acceleration. And that would possibly meaning going to a, a different school. We have students currently that are UMS students. They may take a math course at the high school. But those are services we would still provide.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Norton. Number 12 is specifically about transportation. You know, do we know if and what it is exactly going to look like for MTD and First Student? No, we don't at this point because we're talking, you know, a year and a half away. But Katie and I work really collaboratively with both of our partners, MTD and First Student, and they are aware that this is being discussed and they would work with us. One of the reasons we bring those contracts forward to the board is so we can make adjustments as needed. And so we really will do whatever we can to work with MTD and First Student to make sure that the transportation that is provided to the sixth grade center mirrors or is even better than what we're able to do for the current UMS structure. Same for question 13, which is basically, there's been a lot of questions about will UMS students that are sixth graders get to participate in IESA sports and all the extracurriculars and clubs and activities that we currently offer? And the answer is yes. There are lots of ways that, you know, middle schools are structured in different ways. We have fifth and sixth grade centers. I know in Champaign, they have a pre-K eight building and those students are able to be part of like a sister school model so they can participate in IESA sports. So we would definitely ensure that our sixth graders are able to do that. It may be a little tricky with clubs. We have been able to buy a couple of activity buses. So we've already kind of talked about some of those zero hour classes and some of those other things that happen during the winter time or during bad weather or just the fact that we have the activity buses and, and the schools are so close, just a couple of blocks away from each other. We would be, hopefully be able to utilize those for some of those other extracurricular activities. And then the last one is about after school programming. I know there's a lot of concern right now. This is more from a staffing perspective, not so much from parents. But we only have the Splash Grant, which is, I can't remember how long we've had it, since what, 2006 or '07 or something like that? And we have lost our 21st Century funding. They've just, not so much that we lost it for anything that we did. They are just funding other programs across the state because we've been so blessed to have this program for so many years. And we don't know what Splash or what the after school programming will look like when this would start in '25, '26 school year. But we do know that whatever we offer to our seventh and eighth graders, we would definitely make sure that we have an after school program for sixth graders as well. Can I tell you today what that's going to look like? No. But I will tell you that if we're able to fund or write a grant or whatever we're able to do to offer after school programming like Splash, we will make sure that the sixth graders get to participate in that as well. So those are the major questions that we've been fielding. I think most of those were covered, have also been going to board members. So if there's something specific that we didn't address that board members wanted to talk about, this would be a good time to do that.
I guess one question I would have is if the, if the public has any further questions, how would they, how would they direct them?
You could email them to contact us at USD116.org.
I do have a question about, another building about academic point of view.
So the question was, by moving sixth graders to a sixth grade center, would there be the potential of restructuring or redesigning academic programming and learning for sixth graders as to what they're current, in comparison to what they're currently getting?
Good question. And I think we talked about this more so. I didn't really talk about that tonight, Sitlali, because tonight was really about all those logistical things that people have been asking about and the person who came forward earlier and asked about academics. Of course, one of the major reasons why we're doing this is we want to improve academic outcomes for, again, not just the sixth graders, but also the seventh and eighth graders. And this, I, I know there's been a lot of questions about how this just impacts middle school. It doesn't because these 900 students that are at the middle school are eventually gonna be high schoolers and are eventually going to be going through our high school programs. And so if we can change their trajectory as sixth graders and improve their academics and improve their independent skills and make them stronger and more resilient and just all the positive things that will come from being in a sixth grade space, that's going to just make them a more, you know, at a higher level as a seventh grader. And that's gonna just improve their outcomes as they transition to the high school. And so, yes, the academics is a huge part of why we're doing this. There've been a lot of really great conversations happening at UMS. I've participated in as many of them as I can. I think we haven't made any real decisions yet about what the academic structure is going to look like because right now, they're just waiting for you guys to make a decision. They've come up with a, with a lot of really great ideas. I think we are planning what we know we need to have, is we need to have core team things. We need to have electives. We need to make sure we have special education programming and dual language programming. But what that service delivery is going to look like, I think is going to take a lot more time to discuss with the UMS folks. And I think they are at the point where they've put in as much time as they really want to put in. I mean, we've had after school meetings. We've met during the day. And until this board makes a decision about what's going to happen, I can't really tell you what that is going to look like. We've had some creative ideas about the schedule. We've talked about what are some ways that we can offer interventions and supports and help those students that, I've heard from many people about the fact that we need to focus all of our resources at elementary because we have fifth graders that leave fifth grade and can't read. Well, guess what? Those kids leave fifth grade and can't read, and they become sixth graders who can't read and seventh graders who can't read and eighth graders who can't read. And so if we don't change that for them at the sixth grade level, they're gonna be ninth graders that can't read. And so we have had a lot of really great conversations about, this is an opportunity for us to do something different. We're not trying to just pick up what we do at UMS right now and just replicate it here in this space and just say, okay, this is, we're gonna do the exact same, same thing we're doing over there. Because guess what? It's not been working. So we don't want to just take what we've been doing there and just plop it in a new space and say, we're just gonna do the exact same thing. And I think the UMS folks really want to think outside the box. But it takes a lot of time and effort and planning to do that. And like we've said, this is a multi-month. I mean, this takes a whole year to kind of plan all of this. And I think they're at the point where we've had as many conversations as we're gonna have at the building level until the board makes a decision about what they would like to do moving forward. And Jo, you wanted, look like you wanted to add to that.
You hit, you, you said it, Doc. You got it all. I would say, what, as my former principal had would say also is that in a school where you have six, in a middle school with sixth, seventh and eighth grade altogether, the master schedule, how you design when classes are being offered at different grade levels and what, when students take electives versus their core classes gets really rigid and it's hard to be flexible when you have three grade levels that you're trying to plan, just like in an elementary school when you have K through five and so on and so forth. But if you have just a grade level in one building, you don't have to worry about how it fits with seventh and eighth grade. You can be very flexible and creative in a new way. And that would be really exciting as a principal and as, as a teacher and to be able to say, maybe we don't, maybe 50 minute class periods, we don't have to do that anymore. Maybe they're all 75 minute classes, right? Or you can be much more flexible in how you operate, which is exciting. So the question was, has there been any surveying of families regarding the sixth grade center at this point?
Nope, until, no, it has not. We do have a survey that is out for teachers. But we kind of paused it until the teachers could come over and see Wiley because a lot of the questions that they were putting in were really about the space, which is one of the reasons why we opened up the tour last week and did that. So, no, we've not surveyed all of the parents because we're really reliant, and we're gonna talk about this with the facility planning, is we pulled together a group of stakeholders to kind of represent that group. And they brought forward a recommendation to the board for a sixth grade center. So we want the board to address that and respond to it. And that is where we're starting, so.
There have been many emails coming to the board from, from parents and teachers. So I would just encourage parents to speak up if that's something that they think is gonna be good for their children or not. So we encourage them to convey their, their thoughts with us.
I would agree because right now, I think board is, the board is hearing from a very select group of voices. We've heard from many of those people here through public comment. We're not really hearing from people with sixth graders or with middle schoolers. So if you feel strongly about this, we would encourage you to let the board know how you feel. So, good point, Sheri.
Can I add something else? It would be also really helpful if we can hear the voices from the teachers and for the parents and especially for the students. There is a way to involve the students because automatically this is for them and for the future. So if we can get involved, all the community that, we are receiving all these emails, mostly they are negative. It would be really helpful for us to hear, because right now, we only hear you and administration saying why we need this. But we, I'm not listening, I'm not hearing the community saying, why do we need this? So it would be good if the administration invests some time to make not only us, but also the community that is against, to hear what is the possibilities. And I'm really happy to hear you guys are kind of like in board because about the volleyball program, I know it makes sense. So that also gives me like, okay, well, you know.
They've done some internal surveys at UMS. I don't know that we, those were designed to bring to the board level, but they have put out some surveys to kids, asking them things like, if we had a, what electives do you like? And what electives would you like to see and what new electives? So they've been getting some ideas that way from kids, like, okay, here are the electives that we teach. But what would you, if we could just throw up any electives and if we could do any exploratory classes, what would be some of the things that you'd like to learn more about or do? And so they've been getting some interesting data from the students in that way. But I just want to reiterate again, you might be hearing me talking about this, but I was not one of the people who voted in the committee. And we had many, many people who spent their summer and gave up a lot of their time to bring forward a recommendation to the board about a sixth grade center. So I just want to say, yes, I'm doing the talking for that group because they're not here and it's 10 o'clock at night. But, yeah, so I just wanted to say that again. Okay.
I just want to let you guys know that I have to go now, but thank you for having me.
Thank you, Paulina.
Really appreciate you being here.
And staying so late.
Thank you.
And, and we very much appreciate the fact that you come prepared, that you come with questions and that you chime in. We really, we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
So with the permission of the board, just in the interest of time and since Jo and Lupe are still there, we wanted to also talk to you about a couple of the time. Can I go to the next thing, Paul, unless people have? I think it's all continued discussion because next I'm gonna talk about facilities and next I'm gonna talk about the redistricting piece of it. And of course, I asked Jo and Lupe, following our last discussion where there were comments about that we were going to have to fast track a decision about dual language and do all of that in the next month or two. So I invited them to come also to talk a little bit about. So this document that you have, I am not gonna, in, just in the interest of time, go through this. It really was designed for our new board members. And so I do want to thank, I know Ben was out of town. So I offered a two-on-two session with Sheri and Lola and Ben because they really didn't get to hear all of the background about how we ended up talking about Wiley and the asbestos abatement and the capital improvement plans from previous years. And so Lola participated in that and Sitlali and Sheri. And we, it was a great conversation. I think they learned a lot about the many, many years that we've been talking about doing this. So I'm not gonna belabor that unless Ben has specific questions since we didn't get to meet with him. But this document was designed to just kind of let the public know and as well as our new board members know that Wiley has been something that has been at the forefront of many, many board conversations for many years. So in 2016, we were talking about, is Urbana well served by the number, size and location of our elementary schools? So we were talking about that even back then. In 2020, we were having conversations also, again, looking at Wiley when we had to make a decision about which elementary school we were gonna renovate next. So there were conversations about Wiley back then. Um, so there were conversations about Wiley back then. And then, of course, here we are, twenty twenty-three, uh, really talking about what are we going to do with the committee's recommendations? So the second part of this uh, document was really just basically to say to the board. Um, I heard, you know, things at our last meeting around. Um, you know, we really don't think we can really vote for this and we really don't want to consider a sixth grade center for all these reasons. Um, and we're going to talk about this a little bit with redistricting here in a second when I shift gears. But I I just want to say publicly, um, and I want to say on the record. That um, the board asked us to put together a facility committee. Um, we did exactly what you asked us to do. We put the people on the committee um, in a very impartial and non-biased way. Um, we put the, we, we, we comprised the committee of the people you asked us to have there. Um, we ran the committees basically the way the board asked us to and it was very difficult. To have these be open meetings, the recordings, the minutes, there's just, it it was just a, it was a difficult process. Which really slowed down the work. Um, we lost people at the very beginning who were very excited about being part of this committee. Who after coming to the first couple of meetings, it wasn't what they signed up for. So the people who remained from April to August should be commended because they put in a significant amount of time. They came to meetings all summer. Administrators gave up their summers, parents gave up their summers. We gave up our summer. It was a lot of work and it was really intense and it was exhausting. Not just physically, mentally. It was hard. And so when people from the committee hear the board saying, we're, we don't even think we're going to entertain a vote for this. We're not going to talk about that. Maybe we can push that to further. Um, people have said to me, someone just said it to me this week. If the board doesn't take this recommendation seriously, there are people in this district who are never going to be on another district-wide committee ever. We did this with dual language and we're doing the same thing. So I would implore you on August third, when we talked about having. Uh, a recommendation or something, the middle school folks are just waiting. And so I think everyone deserves to hear from you and to say, we just don't think we can talk about this now. Is is just not okay. And I I know I'm speaking for myself, but hopefully all the people who were on the. On the committee will also speak up um, and let board members know that this, these are important decisions. And like Paul said, this is why you guys become board members. It's not fun, it's not easy. And anything that we do is going to make somebody unhappy. And I have to live with that every single day as superintendent. And as board members, you have to too. And I know these are hard decisions. But it's part of what you signed up for and the people who did this work deserve to hear from you. So that's all I'm going to say about that. And then, um, next I want to talk about uh, redistricting a little bit. And we had a lot of conversations about um, bringing in redistricting consultants and strategic planning. But before we do that, um, just based on the conversations we heard last time about dual language. I thought it would make sense to have Joe and uh, Lupe give a little bit of a timeline about how we ended up here. Um, so Ben, I know you didn't get to hear this, but Lola and Sheri and Sit Lali did. I think it was helpful for them. So we thought it would be helpful um, just for the public because even tonight I heard things that were just incorrect. So I think just kind of reiterating how this process started, why it started and how we ended up here in a brief way. So if you would look at your um, timeline for dual language, you've got a kind of colorful version. And then you've got a really straightforward version. So go for it.
Are we able to project one of the documents?
The timeline. Do you have that, John? You have it, John? You need me to? I'll send, yeah, it was in the packet. It's called Spanish Dual Language Planning Committee Timeline.
So, yeah, so we'll go ahead and get started. So just very quickly, this was um, an extension of a timeline. That we actually shared previously at one of the community roundtables during this process.
Oh, not that one, John. It looks like this.
Either one of those, it's the same information. One of them's just prettier.
Yep.
So back in December twenty twenty-one, um, we, Joe and I met with the board. To talk about some challenges that we were seeing across um, our programs. At the time, um, the district and um, uh, Joe and I formed a committee. To look at how we can make improvements. Um, over the course of the spring, uh, that committee. Uh, which was made up of um, teachers, parents, administration, um, and teachers at every level. Uh, looked at a variety of different challenges that they were having and some recommendations on how to improve. Um, the conversation at the elementary level led a lot to a conversation about. Um, being in strands versus being a strand model, which is what we have now where we have grade uh, classrooms. Um, within a building as opposed to being in a whole building. Um, in May, the committee leadership brought the team's recommendation to move to a whole school model. Um, the board requested for more information before voting. Um, at the time in May, we did not necessarily recommend which building. We just said that being in one building would be very. Um, beneficial for the program, for the, for all of the stakeholders involved. Um, throughout the summer and um, we continue to meet as a committee. Um, and continuing to do more um, opportunities for feedback. Um, throughout September and October as well. Um, that was meeting with faculty, roundtable discussions. Uh, meeting with parents in different settings. In October, the D L committee brought forward an additional. Um, more uh, information that the board had requested regarding budget, transportation. Um, impact on families as well as a recommended school. At the time, the committee had recommended Lille be the site for dual language. Um, I do want to be clear that at the time, we were only looking at Dr. Williams and Lille. Because that is where the strand models were held. Um, so um, one of the things that the committee discussed was how do we do one school? And only potentially disrupt half of the building whereas taking over an entire building that doesn't have dual language at all. Would have disrupted the entire building. So that's why the conversation was focused on would a whole school be better at Dr. Williams or at Lille? Um, then um, in December, um, we came to provide more additional information. Um, and the December sixth meeting, the board members present decided to do a straw poll. Um, and decided that on the thirteenth, they were not going to vote on the recommendation. Um, on the thirteenth, Joe and I did come back um, to continue that conversation with the additional board members present. Um, at which point, um, it was decided that the decision would be on pause. Um, until the rest of the conversation around um, Wiley, redistricting and all the other district initiatives were had. So um, throughout the spring, we continued, we moved forward with a outside evaluator, the Center of Applied Linguistics. To really look at our programs more thoroughly, um, from a quantitative and qualitative um, perspective. They came and did a presentation on May sixteenth. At that point, Joe and I also did a follow-up presentation to look at where our initial findings and challenges were. And how they overlapped with the Center of Applied Linguistics. So that's where we are today. Um, I think the initial challenges that we discussed um, still continue. Um, that challenge for teacher collaboration, the inconsistency as far as classroom size. And inability to more balanced classrooms across building is still the same. While we have, you know, some small classes at some grade levels, we have some very large classes at the opposite building at grade levels. Um, which could, could have been remedied had we been in one building. The staffing challenge as well could have been potentially remedied. For example, currently we have. Um, two long-term subs at Dr. Williams, one of which that does not speak Spanish unfortunately. Had we been in one building and been able to more balanced classrooms, we would, could have been started the year fully staffed. Um, so these are challenges that are going to continue. Um, unfortunately, due to hiring challenges and recruitment, we do everything we can with H R. Um, the additional stipends we were able to offer for teachers, but bilingual and special ed teachers are very hard to recruit right now. They're very much in demand and, you know, we're just hoping that we can find a solution. Any questions or comments for the being Joe?
So if you were to have a single dual language school, what strand size building would you need?
Currently this year, we are occupying twenty-one classrooms. Had we been in one building, based on current enrollment numbers, we could have been in eighteen.
So as I mean, you need a four-strand building or a three-strand building?
It's not a four or three answer. It depends by grade level. So at kindergarten and first grade, you might need four at second through fifth.
Let me rephrase the question then. Which of the six current elementary schools could you put a dual language school into?
That is up for the bo- board to decide because what the committee.
You need to tell us what you need because if it's up to me and I put you in a small shack of a building, then you're going to be pissed off because the building's too small.
So Robbie, Robbie, just take it, just calm down a little bit. If they need eighteen classrooms, the the buildings that currently have eighteen classrooms would be. Uh, D P W, Thomas Payne, Yankee Ridge and Lille, everything but Wiley.
And if we need eighteen, we could even do eighteen at King if we had to. But at the upward level, we've been looking at more like twenty or twenty-one, so. We wouldn't want to go to a building where we just barely fit, um, because that doesn't allow us to grow at all, so.
And that's eighteen core classrooms, right?
Currently, yeah.
Not counting any like specials or?
Correct. That's just classroom spaces. That's not talking about fine arts. That's not talking about um, literacy intervention and specialized teachers.
So that would be every school except the current Wiley, yeah.
I also brought this up before, um, but I didn't, um, I was wondering with the committee, did they ever discuss? Or what were the pros or cons for having a um, like K through second grade and third, fourth and fifth in another building? If they split it up in buildings, that way the the teachers could collaborate in the same grade.
Yeah, we did talk about a variety of different scenarios, um, doing grade level centers, which is um, you know, something I know that like Mohammed does. Where there's a K two site and a three-five site was discussed. Um, there were a lot of challenges and I believe it is one in one of the presentation links um, from December or January. Um, where they talked about why they didn't feel like that was appropriate. Um, due to a lot of challenges with families that have kids at early childhood as well as the K two, as well as the three-five. Um, there were just a lot of reasons why the staff didn't think it was the appropriate choice.
You talked about other buildings too, but like, um, they do have schools where they have K through two or third, then the fourth, fifth. Three, four and five together or and then then the middle school. So, I mean, it's done in other communities where they split up grades like that.
Yeah, I think there were, there were uh, pros, when those models were discussed, that the pros were the ability to, for the collaboration. Of all the kindergarten dual language, all the first grade dual language together. Um, the cons, based in my recollection from the committee conversations, the cons outweighed the pros in that type of model. When trying to, I think it was um, the whole school model in terms of the whole school buying into being. The the pillar, oops, the pillars of dual language education would still be an issue because you would still have monolingual classes in the same school. That would still be the big issue that wouldn't be addressed, if that makes sense.
Question? Okay, I'm going to hop right to redistricting. Um, so I'm moving to this, this, and you guys stay because you're part of one of the options, sorry. You don't get to leave yet. Um, and I am not going, once again, I'm not going to read to you. So this is our history of elementary redistricting. And again, I I really put this together um, for our new board members, just to give them some historical perspective. I think um, for the public as well, thinking about um, the redistricting processes. That we've already been through. So in eighty-nine, ninety, um, in two thousand one, two thousand two. I really want to jump more so to two thousand sixteen, um, when we first started really experiencing. Um, the D P W enrollment issues. So there was a committee um, that was put together. So John, it's the, okay, um, a committee that was put together to address the enrollment concerns. Uh, at D P W, I was part of that as the deputy superintendent at the time. Um, we started the enrollment cap uh, in the school year two thousand seventeen, two thou- two thousand eighteen. Um, one of the reasons we started doing this is we had a year at D P W, and I don't know if Lupe and Joe even remember this. Where we had a hundred and twenty kindergartners. We had five kindergarten classrooms. We probably could have put six hundred kids there that year if we had not done the enrollment cap. And that was back in two thousand sixteen. So flash forward to two thousand twenty-three. And we're still talking about the same issues and we have not addressed them at all. I think our, our kind of self-imposed cap has helped. Um, but basically what it's done is we have sent two, three hundred students, three hundred, right, Kim? In the last, just since I've been superintendent, we have um, kind of de facto redistricted three hundred kids. That could be a D P W to other schools throughout the district. Um, and just the fact that we've been doing it now for five, six years is um, problematic. And and people have been coming to this board, people have been uh, talking to me. Um, about redistricting for two years. And to hear the comments made around, maybe we just will wait and redistrict next year. Um, in favor of a strategic plan, I am a hundred percent on board with strategic planning. I, I don't disagree with one person who has said that we need a strategic plan. A couple of people emailed me this week and said, hey, I'm looking for the strategic plan. And when I send it to them, I'm embarrassed that our strategic plan is from two thousand eleven, twelve. Is it addressing any of our current needs? Absolutely not. And as the superintendent, I a hundred percent know that and agree with that. However, the, if you flip to the next page, the people who are talking about, well, we need a strategic plan. So you can do some of these things. Guys, I could throw thirty people in a room in the next week or two and we would come up with the exact same things that are on here. We need to fix the D P W enrollment issues. We need to increase student achievement for every single kid, whether they're black, brown, white or purple. We have equity initiatives. We did our equity audit. We know what our needs are. We know we need more teachers. We know we need more teachers of color. We know we need the financial resources to support all of these things. That's the strategic plan. It's not a secret. It's not a surprise. We can't write a strategic plan until this board makes some decisions. I don't want to put people in a room. I don't want to engage everyone all year around what should our strategic plan be? And people give us all these great ideas that one may, maybe the board may or may not support them. But our parents, our teachers, our students, our stakeholders. They can create a plan, but they're not the decision makers. You guys are. So until we make some serious decisions around D P W. Around what we're going to do with Wiley, around whether or not we're going to have a one-school model. It is, is, it's kind of pointless for us to to talk about strategic planning. We need decisions. So when you guys give us some information, we can take those things and really write a robust five-year plan. Right now, if we wrote a strategic plan, everything that we, I just mislisted would be part of it, but with no decisions. So I am coming back to you again to say. I would like to explore working with some consultants. To help us address some of the issues that we've been talking about for the last two years. Um, on this page, there are some, um, if you could go to the next slide, John. Options that we could explore. Again, redistricting consultants don't make the decisions. The board does. The board would determine what guiding principles you want the consultants to prioritize. The board would make decisions around every single school being racially balanced. Every single school is economically balanced. Do we want neighborhood schools or don't we want neighborhood schools? But we need to start this process now, or it will once again be another school year where we have a whole group of folks that we will continue to disenfranchise because their needs are not being met in their neighborhood in comparison to some other folks whose needs are clearly being met in their neighborhoods. And it'll be one more year of not addressing the DPW enrollment issues and another year of us not addressing the issues that we've been talking about since, what was the first day? December of two thousand twenty-one related to dual language. So, we're almost to two years of now talking about dual language and improving that program. So, I, I really want the board to give administration some guidance. My recommendation is at the top. We recommend that we go out, and I have a consultant group that I've been having lots of conversations with, and I would love to bring them to the board level and let you guys start talking with them. The conversation that I have, they watched the board meeting, and so the conversation I had with them after our last meeting was, if we don't start this process soon, we won't have anything by the end of this year even. So, we cannot keep pushing this to November, or December, or January. If we don't get someone in here and start working with us, we won't be able to have decisions even at the end of this year, and we'll be having this exact same conversation next year in August of two thousand twenty-four. So, there are four options here. I'm not asking you to choose one of these tonight. I'm not saying these are the only four options. I'm just saying these are four options that we could ask a consultant to come forward. They make a lot of money to do all of this. They will look at where every single kid lives. They will look at where, who's a walker, who's a rider, who's on the bus, who's not on the bus, if they're black, if they're white, if they speak Spanish, if they speak French. They will do all of that. They will bring forward however many options you guys want. These are the four that I've come up with to say, based on the, to share with you based on the conversations that we've talked about. If you want to have an option five and an option six, we could talk about that too. So, they'll basically work with, in whatever parameters we give them, and when I say we, I mean you as the board. You get to kind of set that. And when they bring these options forward, it will be after significant community engagement. So, we've talked about doing town halls. We've talked about doing surveys, which, just like us, they've experienced the same thing. Surveys are, of course, not the best way to get engagement. So, we would have some in-person opportunities for people to talk about which option would be the one that they would most align with in the community. So, I think the first thing we need to do is, it would be great if I could say to IGW and I could say to the middle school folks, hey, we want to keep talking about a sixth-grade center. We think this is something that's important to our community. It will take months and months for IGW to put together a schematic design and a program for a sixth-grade center, and it's going to take lots of meetings with UMS folks to really design something that we think is meaningful. We're already talking about twenty-five, twenty-six because, as Scott shared with the committee this summer, just adding on the new part of what would be needed for a sixteen center is eighteen months. That's from sticking the first shovel on the ground to opening the school. So, we're talking about just, just eighteen months of building and the renovation process. Well, not renovation, the new part. The current Wiley hopefully is going to have a lot of the renovations done this year. We can move a little bit faster while the building's closed. There are all kinds of things that we can do when kids are not in the building versus when we have, when we're having school. So, the fact that the building is closed helps us. But it, again, the clock is ticking, and if we don't make some decisions pretty quickly about what we're going to do with Wiley, we might be talking not even just twenty-five, twenty-six. We might be looking at twenty-six, twenty-seven before we're able to feel any benefits of doing anything in that space. So, I'm not asking you to straw poll or anything like that. I know the sixth-grade center conversation hopefully will be back on the agenda for October third, but I am asking you to seriously look at these four options and give me the authority to go back to the consultants and say, hey, come and have a conversation with the board about what a redistricting plan might look like for this year.
So, I have two questions, I guess, from, that would help. I think the board gets time, how it needs to make its decision. So, what you're asking for is to present the administration with a set of options, either these four or potentially others, some set of them, to hand to a, an external company. By when would this set of options need to be delivered to administration?
So, in my last conversation with the consultants, they only work with real data, so they would wait until fall housing. So, ideally, in my first calendar that I kind of created for our board topics, it would have been great if we could have had the consultants here in November to kind of do that first presentation so they could get started because it is, it is pretty time-intensive, what they have to do. But the last conversation that I had with them, they said that even if they come to a board meeting in December, having these options all laid out for us by April will be pushing it. My hope was that they would be able to bring forward options that the board could choose so then we could spend the end of the year doing strategic planning. That was my original hope, is we could, we could start redistricting. We would be doing that all year, and then by springtime, have several weeks of school left. And there are some things I think we could do simultaneously as well. Like I've said, we, we kind of already know what our big, our big rock issues are so that we could probably be doing some strategic planning engagements kind of side by side while the redistricting is happening. So, we could hopefully end the year with a redistricting model, like this is what we're going to do. This is the process. This is when we're going to start it. This is how we're going to roll it out. This is whether we're going to do grandfathering or not do grandfathering. All those things would have to be decided. And then we have at least a couple of months at the end of the year to start messaging that and talking about it. So, families can make decisions about what they want to do for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then at the same time, we get to be doing some strategic planning work at the end of the year. So, my hope would be November.
All right. The other part of it is, I mean, when would the board need to make a decision with regards to Wiley to facilitate the, the planning process for just for the construction and the format of the building? That's, these are the two decisions?
Sure, yeah. Oh, absolutely. I could have Scott come back and talk about that, but the conversations that I think he shared when we looked at the timeline, and I could probably find that if my wifi is working and pull that timeline back up again. But the, like I said, the building part is the eighteen, eighteen months. I think our goal was to have bids done, a design, have all of that, a contractor and everything lined up by February. Is that right, Katie and Randy? To bring back to the board, here is the scope of the building. Here is how much it's going to cost. Here is basically the timeline of when it would be completed for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, Scott has been, we've had lots of meetings at UMS, but again, like I said earlier, I think we've kind of reached that point where they can't do much more in terms of designing or planning what the building will look like until the board actually kind of gives them an indication of, yes, this is something that we're interested in doing.
So, reading, listening between the lines here, it sounds like you made a decision on that October and decision on the set of options in November in order to meet the timeframe you desire.
And I think the committee was expecting the board to, after the three public hearings, weigh in on the sixth-grade center. So, I think that is what we would still like to hear for the October third meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul. That was a great way to kind of bring me back to, bring it all back together.
I mean, that's what we need to make our decisions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Board members, any questions or comments? Yeah, I'm with you. I'm with you, Robbie. It's that time of night.
It's late.
Listening to everything that you said and how one thing was delaying and delaying and delaying, it draws us to this mess. And now it feels like there is a lot of decisions to do, and it seems like it's really hard because they're really hard topics.
Yes.
But, I, we have our own Spanish. Creo que es mejor que the board really takes in consideration this and act regardless of wherever direction we're going to go. We cannot wait more. And really, we have to act. I mean, I'm pretty new in here, hearing and seeing all this story, like, two years in the Duolingo program, when there's a need in the community, why? And now we're going to wait another two years for the sixth grade? Why? I mean, it doesn't make sense for me as a parent and doesn't make sense to me as a part of this team. So, I know it's a heavy decision, and I know people is going to get upset regardless of whatever we do. But we are just thinking about the good of our kids and the community. I think that's something we should do like long time ago. So, whatever you, you guys feel like with choices in there, bringing somebody else who's going to tell us, yes, this is what you should do, and then we're going to ignore it again, like we ignore the recommendation for the Duolingo. I honestly feel like at the moment we have that presentation, the next meeting should be like, yes, we're going to do this. But here we are. So, come on, guys. Let's work.
Yeah, so somebody who sat here for twelve years, I kind of almost feel the need to apologize to this board and to the public for the situation things are right now. When we redistricted back in, in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, we didn't do anything really. There was, there was a lot of resistance to the proposals that came out of a committee that met for eighteen months. And as a result, the, the board caved to the public pressure and, and basically did nothing. And things slowly got worse and worse and worse over time. It's kind of exponentially compounded. And that experience was so rough. The prior board was pushed, whenever the word redistricting came up, we pushed back. I mean, oh, we can't do that because it was so hard last time. And, and now it just, it just made things worse. It's like, it's like having, knowing you have a cavity and then not going to the dentist, right? Yeah.
Well, because we should have done this in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, when the very first year, and I was deputy superintendent, so I was sitting at the table, but not really. And we, we had a very small conversation, and I think what Paul said is exactly true, that everybody was just, we can't live through that again, and it was really hard. And I was, I was a principal on the redistricting committee when we did that in, in two thousand eleven, and it was, we had parents there and principals there, and we met at the RPC every other week for eighteen months. And for the board to move ten students was just deep-lating. And so, when we, when we got here in two thousand sixteen and we saw what was happening in the DPW Prairie neighborhood, we should have addressed it then, and we didn't. And I, and Paul's exactly right. I think it was, the experience was so difficult that no one wanted to do it again. And so, we put a Band-Aid on the problem, and we've been Band-Aiding the problem since then. And the, the Band-Aid has burst several times, and we just keep adding another Band-Aid on top.
And I feel like that's what happened when the Duolingo program came. Some people in the Lille district saying no, and then we got scared, and then we put another Band-Aid. And now some people from the Wiley district, and it's my district, that's my home, says no, and then we are putting Band-Aid. But I, one of the things I keep hearing and hearing is like, be transparent, be honest, don't have double agendas, don't have like pretending to have a committee and then just manipulate everything, whatever we said. I just don't see as a parent how we can trust in something, you know? So, I feel like this is a moment for the board to really re-construe yourself.
Kind of, this is the moment for the board to kind of redefine themselves.
And do something. Either he says no, either I say no. Just say, put it on the table and just keep going.
Any, any further questions or discussion?
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. I know that was a hard conversation.
It's, and it's late at night, and, and I'm sure things might come to you tomorrow or down the road, but if, if, if you, if you need something to help you make these decisions, you know, reach out to administration and, and if we can get it on an agenda, so we can talk about it.
Thank you, guys, for staying so late.
So, the question today was that we should go ahead and ask somebody to come next?
I would love, yes. So, if I have a proposal, I have it sitting right here in front of me, actually, with a cost proposal and a scope of work from a company called RSP Associates. They've worked with Naperville and Aurora and some big cities like, you know, Memphis, Tennessee, and they've redistricted districts that have booming enrollment and districts that have been three, four, or five times our size. So, I've talked to other superintendents who have worked with them. They're not local, so we would have to do some Zooming, but they are committed to coming in person for some of these things. And then some, some things would be, you know, digital and virtual, and we'll just kind of have to work with that because they're, we don't, we don't have an easy way to get here in central Illinois, you know, depending on where you're located. But yes, I'd love to be able to reach out to them this week, and I'm sure they're probably watching this meeting from Kansas where they are, and get them, get them here to have a conversation with you. That first conversation would probably be virtual.
I guess one additional question is, I'm assuming that this organization has access or has demographers on staff that they could?
Oh, absolutely.
Because that's one of the things that comes up repeatedly in, in conversations with constituents, is how can we know without a demography study, you know, how to, you know, how to inform these decisions?
Sure. That's, that's part of what they do. Yeah. But I would like to bring them forward so they can talk to you about what they do instead of me just kind of sharing it in this way. They're the experts, not me.
So, the question is?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I can put them on an agenda and work with them to see when they can come and do a virtual presentation probably. I'm not going to fly them here to have that initial conversation, but.
You know, by policy, the president and the superintendent jointly form agendas. So, I think, you know, we can say publicly that we would take them in the direction of the board, and, and we will be putting this on a future agenda. Yeah, we don't need, we don't know formal vote, so.
Thank you, Senali, because I was going to keep just moving on. I appreciate you pausing and continuing that conversation.
Okay, now we can actually do our business. Up to action items, this is our consent agenda. I'm going to read it off. If anybody wishes to have something removed from the consent agenda and voted on individually, please let me know. Eleven dot one are our minutes for the August twenty-second business meeting, the August twenty-ninth District Parent Teacher Advisory Committee meeting, the September fifth study session, and September eleventh executive session. Eleven dot two, we have bills and checks. Ed funds the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars, own and fund bills for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, transportation fund bills for five thousand seven hundred dollars, working cash bonds for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, school facility occupancy tax for one point eight million dollars, tort for a hundred and fifty-six million, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, excuse me. Life safety levy for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, payroll benefits for three point three million dollars, abandoned education for a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We have, as typical for this time of year, a long list of personnel items, including some retirements that were announced. I don't know if you want to say anything about those, but, um, three retirements, right?
Yeah, um, these three teachers were here when I started teaching in two thousand, and they have put in for retirement in twenty-five and twenty-six. And so that means that I keep getting older too. But we are very excited for them and their journey after their employment at Urbana Schools, but it'll still be a while. And we have an administrative personal item.
So it's eleven dot four is an administrative personnel item.
Yes, he is here. So Peter, would you like to come up? Thank you for patiently waiting. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Bridget Maloney, who's at Lille, excuse me, Chuck Koplinsky, who's at UMS, and Don Barber, who's also at UMS. And so they put in for the retirement under our new retirement enhancement from the last contract negotiations. And so they're able to put in that up to four years to be able to get a little bit of a perk. And then we're also able to try and plan for those vacancies. Okay?
And go ahead and introduce our proposed new administrator.
Sure. Thanks for waiting. In July twenty twenty-three, the director of human resources position became vacant as the former director took a similar position in her hometown. The director of human resources position was posted for six weeks before holding interviews. Two applicants held the proper certification and credentials to hold this administrative position. UEA members, clerical staff, building administrators, and district administrators joined the large level-one interview committee on Thursday, August thirty-first. Both candidates were found to be excellent and advanced to level-two interviews with Dr. Avery Tatum and the executive leadership team. Mr. Peter Furch was selected as the most outstanding candidate in the level-one and level-two interview committees. Mr. Furch was born and raised in Urbana-Champaign community. In two thousand and four, he earned his bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Mr. Furch began his teaching career in Champagne Unit Four District, where he taught fifth grade for eight years. During that time, he returned to the University of Illinois and earned his master of education degree along with his state of Illinois administrative license. In two thousand and twelve, Mr. Furch was hired as an assistant principal at Barstow Elementary School and later went on to be the school's principal. Mr. Peter Furch has also served students, families, and staff through his work at the central office administrative building in Champagne Unit Four. Starting in two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Furch served as the director of magnet schools, serving overseeing a nine point six million dollar federal magnet schools grant. Currently, Mr. Furch serves as the director of school improvement, where he supports all schools within the district. Throughout his educational career, Mr. Peter Furch has had the good fortune to work with and learn from numerous talented colleagues. Mr. Furch says he's excited to support the Urbana School District and eager to help lead the human resources department. And so with that, we are recommending Mr. Peter Furch to serve as the next director of human resources.
Thank you. We have two more things on our consent agenda. A resolution authorizing and directing sale of disposal of personal property. These are desks, file cabinets, coffee thermos, kitchen racks, whiteboard, I'm getting tired of talking, and a variety of teacher-student textbooks. And eleven dot six is the appointment of authorized, appointment of, appointment of authorized agent for IMRF. This is Shelby Smith, payroll specialist, the district's IMRF authorized agent. So that's our consent agenda for the evening. Does anybody wish to remove any of these individual items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the, to approve the entire consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palowski?
Yes. Congratulations and welcome to the district.
Thank you so much. Um, it's, it's an honor to be here. I'm excited to serve and lead in Urbana. It is late at ten-thirty, but you all are doing some great work. It's great to hear the awesome next steps Urbana's gonna be taking. I'm excited to help the well-oiled machine of the human resources department continue their great work. So again, thank you for your confidence and support.
Thank you.
Moving on with our individual action items, twelve dot one are gifts. Health of the homeless, U of I donated school supplies, snacks, and reusable water bottles to Lille Elementary School. U of I employees and credit union donated a variety of school supplies that were divided between Urbana Middle and High School. Kenneth and Linda Maritzi in Urbana donated three hundred and twenty-two dollars to purchase recorders for a King Elementary music classroom. Atlas Agency donated three hundred dollars to Trish Anton, the CU one-to-one mentoring coordinators program. And Kanita Fay, Urbana donated a hundred dollars to the Urbana High School Winter Guard to sponsor a regional competition entry. Is there a motion to accept these gifts and send out thank yous?
Summer?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twelve dot two is a formal approval of the fiscal year twenty-four Urbana School District and Adult Education Budget Resolution. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please, and at the end of the meeting, please come here to sign this register for your votes as required by the state. Roll call, please.
Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. Twelve dot three is a Champagne-Urbana Public Health subcontract agreement. Katie, can you provide us some context?
Yeah, the, the two next action items I brought as drafts to one of the August meetings, and nothing's changed since those drafts. So this is to fund the farm-to-school program for this coming year. The Champagne-Urbana Public Health District received two grants, one from USDA and one from the city of Urbana Youth Services. And those two grants are helping fund that program for the standing year to fund a portion of the farm-to-school coordinator salary, the garden coordinator stipends, and a couple of farm-to-school interns. And the Champagne-Urbana Public Health District drafted this language. It's been reviewed by our attorneys, and they've already approved it at their meeting, and it's coming to us for counterapproval.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Stanton? Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. Twelve dot four is a Champagne-Urbana Public Health subcontract agreement, city of Urbana. This is the other one that Katie mentioned with CU PhD and for the school, oh, sorry, CU farm-to-school program. And the, yeah, and the youth services grant for the Champagne-Urbana Public Health District. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. There is no call for future special or executive meetings. It's time for our superintendent's report.
Okay, very quickly. So we kicked off Latine Heritage Month, and we got some great coverage on WCIA for the parade at DPW. And we kicked off the month also, well, not the month, but the activities that will run from September fifteenth to October fifteenth with a soccer match. So it was families versus staff, so papas versus maestros. And of course, the parents kind of beat them pretty badly. Joe's nodding back there. But it was great fun and it was a great match. So there's a picture of that there. Forty Under Forty, we want to recognize one of our very own, Thomas Payne Principal, yay. Ms. Andrea Jackson has been named a Central Illinois Business Magazine Forty Under Forty winner. If you haven't seen the full list, there are a lot of great folks on this list. One of our city council members, Chandra Bishop, is on here. So they really chose some great folks this year, but we are very proud of Andrea and the fact that she is being honored in October. Add on our very own board member, Sitlali Yurici Stanton was also honored this Saturday as, yay, as an emergent leader award at the CU Immigration Forum Award Ceremony. So she was recognized for her work at the New American Welcome Center as, and noted as an emergent leader in our community. So congratulations, Sitlali. That was awesome. Yes. It is homecoming week, so Friday is the pep rally at two-thirty, parade at three-thirty. For anyone who's watching this at home or watching it on YouTube later, please come out. I know, as I mentioned in my update, our football team is young, but they are excited and eager. And we're in a rebuilding year. Our coaches are dedicated, so please come out and support our young people. They are working really, really hard and giving it their all. Are they gonna win all their games? No, but we are just happy to have football back in Urbana. So come back on Friday night at seven o'clock and watch the game, and then the dance is Saturday at seven-thirty. Next week, on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, the CU Marching Showcase, we've talked about that. Our, our great Tiger marching band will be hosting this year, and Centennial and Central will be joining in. So all proceeds will benefit all three programs, so come out and support that. Do you want to talk about this one, Sherri, the Tiger Market Food Pantry?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, we're excited. We have a, the market here is, 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 has full, cabinets are full and ready for the students at the high school. We have Ms. Hernandez, who is the staff representative, and she's working with student volunteers now to unpack the food and to stock the shelves and to keep it organized. We just need students to identify themselves or, or social workers or teachers to identify families that might need food, and we have plenty of food for them. So I'm hoping every two weeks we'll have a distribution where students can find out more about the items. At the pantry, we'll be at the school before school, during breakfast, passing out food, and students can come and take whatever they would like. And they can also be able to order online, and a student is gonna develop that. So if a student doesn't have time to come to the, to the pantry or wants to order food, and confidentially, we will pack up the food for that student, and the student can pick it up. So we're hoping to have distributions every other week. So please let us know if you would like some food or if you know of somebody who would like some food, would like to make sure that they have things in their home.
Thank you.
Can I, can I have a question? Do you have the information in Spanish so we can share in the community?
Yes, it is going to be translated for sure.
Can you send it to me so I can...
Absolutely, absolutely. I believe that it was, it's going to be done.
Yeah, Lucia will distribute them too. So Catherine's working with that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. That was much better sharing than I would have. Last week, we hosted our first family and community cafe. If you remember, Mrs. Webster, our director of family engagement, came and shared, this is one of our strands from our Equity Action Plan. And we had our very first session. And this is just kind of showing, we did more of a table talk model where it really wasn't talking to parents. It was really just gathering information from people who came about how they would like to see the community cafe structured and what kinds of things they want to learn more about related to Urbana. So the next meeting is on November twenty-eighth. Upcoming dates, we've talked about all of these, I think, except for October second is Bring Your Family to School Day. And then October fourth is Walk and Roll to School Day, which is always very fun. So my last slide is really, I know it's late, but I do need you guys to do a little more thinking just for another minute. At our last meeting, we talked about, I know Paul was really interested because we have four new board members and really having another board retreat. I know we had one a couple of years ago when Laura, Ravi, and Brian joined the board. So, say the name. Not Brian, maybe, okay. I thought he was there.
Oh, sorry, my memory is fuzzy. My memory is fuzzy, sorry.
Yeah, I thought he was there.
Thank you for correcting me.
Yes. So we have reached out to IASB, to Perry, who does these for boards. And these are just the first semester dates. He did have some additional dates in January, but I kind of thought you guys would rather do this sooner rather than later. So these are the available dates that he has. The reason the ones on Tuesday are orange is we typically say, we try to have things on Tuesdays since it's a night that you guys are usually busy with board meetings anyway. He did tell us that he does kind of need to know what our top three preferences are as soon as possible. And then he'll let us know which of those three dates would work best for him. I can, I can read off some of the January dates if you think you want to go that far out, but I didn't put them on the slide. So what are you guys thinking?
I guess my request would be that Lori send out a doodle poll with all of these dates to the whole, whole board because Lola's not here, and I, I think we really want to have a date where all seven of us can attend. So can we, can we, can we do that instead of like talking about it right now?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, might as well throw, might as well throw the January dates on there.
It's not a board meeting.
You're just thinking that October the fourth for the ones we, we have kids, we are busy.
I know. I, I put it on here just because I, but I knew you wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, but, yeah. So, yeah, my only guidance to board members would be to try to answer the doodle poll in a timely fashion so we can get back to Perry Hill.
If, can we send the doodle poll out tomorrow and then maybe have people give it to us by Friday so we don't lose dates? Okay, all right, we will do that. And then the last thing we'll need to know is kind of what the goal, if Perry wanted to kind of know, are we wanting to just do like board relations or talking about the role of a board member? I'm like, what is really kind of what, we want him to do something similar as to what he did with us last time. But Ravi, Tori, and Paul kind of already participated in that, so should we put that on as a question as well? We can make it kind of more of a survey, and you guys can tell us what you, or you want to talk about.
I, I think that'd be great to have, to have that feedback as well on that.
Okay. What you guys feel like you need the most during the retreat?
I think we can, we can do that over, over email.
Okay, sounds good to me. Oh, thank you. The fifth is a board meeting day, Lori. We'll look, we'll, we'll take it out. Thanks. And that is it for me. Board reports.
Uh, board reports. Does anybody have one?
Quick, I know there's, there's no school on next Monday. Our Yom Kippur starts on Sunday night, and for the students who are in school might not be there on Monday. It's the day of atonement.
I'm sorry, did you finish? I am going to start working with Lupe to tour some of the schools, especially the Duolingo program, and then start kind of heading some, some of the teachers from Lille, especially fifth grade, also requesting to go and talk to the students. I'm probably gonna do that.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah. And I know, and we didn't really talk about this at the beginning, but it, as you noticed tonight, we were trying something different with interpreting. So moving forward, we weren't able to get an interpreter here tonight, but, and it was great that Joe and Lupe were already here, so that worked out. But moving forward, we are gonna be working with one of our staff members to try to have someone here regularly. And we, and I think what we did tonight worked or worked out really well, so we'll just kind of use this same model moving forward.
Also request to make it even more public that we're going to start having this sort of interpretation?
Yep.
So the Spanish community can have access.
Absolutely. So we, this, we talked about this during Sitlali's two-on-two, and we didn't really have enough time to put that on the, well, the agenda had already been noticed, and, but we'll make sure that we make it pretty well-known. We'll make sure our liaisons know that too. I know Lucia was, Lupe sent something out to all the liaisons today too, so they're aware. So we'll start sharing that. So thank you.
One last thing is we still need to read off our completed FOIA requests. Tom Schroeder's had any new records since my last prior request that provide evidence President Palowski ever appointed any members to the twenty-twenty-three District Facilities Committee to fulfill his official duty regarding board committees. And another for SMART procure a variety of vendor purchase option, a variety of vendor purchase order information. Okay. One last call for board reports. Okay. Uh, one last call for board reports. Hearing none, the chair would greatly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we're done for tonight. Uh, thanks, everybody.